Okay. Thank you, welcome everybody, glad to be here. Thanks everyone for being here. And I'd like to call the Cartwright School Regular Governing Board Meeting to order. This will be a governing board meeting with executive session and we will be having a hearing. So I will be pausing to explain what what happens during that item of the agenda. Thank you. And with that, this is the October first, twenty twenty five public hearing, followed by a regular governing board meeting with executive session. And please let the record reflect that it is six oh eight. And I'd like to announce that today we have governing board vice chair Ms. Rosa Cantú present. Ms. Thank you. Present. Thank you. Ms. Cassandra Hernandez.
Hello, everyone, I'm present.
And Ms. Jennifer Romero.
Present.
And Mr. Denise Garcia.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I'm Lydia Hernandez, governing board president. If you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and we have Glennial Downs joining us today. Great job. And I also like at this time to introduce our C E A representative Jesse Lee and Mary Defoya Rodriguez. Alrighty. The Cartwright School District is located on the antentral homelands of the Ojocum, Akimil, Odom, and Odom Jude people, ancestors of the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community, or is otherwise known as S R P M I C. We acknowledge the rich oral history, culture of these communities and their ancestral ties to the land. And I will now move to the adoption of the agenda. So. I hope that we adopt the agenda as presented. Ms. Cantú, do I have a second?
I second Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Cantú. And I will proceed to a roll call vote and how do you vote on the adoption of the agenda?
I vote aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote? Adoption of the agenda?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Romero, how do you vote?
I will abstain.
Thank you. And Mr. Denise Garcia, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, and I vote aye and motion carries. And we are going headed into the public hearing for the twenty four twenty five bond and override report. Dr. Etheridge.
Perfect. Madam President, governing board members, Superintendent Watson, executive team and all those in the audience. This is our annual bond and override presentation. And so state statute R S fifteen dash four nine one requires that if we expend bond or override monies in a fiscal year, that we give a public presentation between September first and October thirty first of each year. So we're gonna see some very, some similarities between the bond presentation we gave a few months ago. This one's gonna narrow in really to the twenty four twenty five school year. So just a reminder, the voters authorized a sixty million dollar bond. Um, in November of twenty twenty, in that election, we went out then subsequently and sold fifteen million in twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four to get that sixty million um in bond authorization. So reminder, bond is generally used for those large scale capital projects, construction, remodeling, renovation, those types of things. So again, this is a slide that was used a couple of months ago, which just reminds us of all of the different bond projects we had or what we've paid out of bond projects so far. So drop off modifications, outdoor learning spaces, restroom upgrades, gymnasiums, long jump pits, all of those types of things were purchased using bond funds. But to narrow in a little bit more on just the F Y twenty five expenditures, I labeled it by project here, so we can see for athletic field renovations, that was about nineteen thousand dollars. The cafeteria remodel was about eight million dollars. Drop off modifications, about twenty six thousand. The event center, about four point three million dollars paid from bond funds. A fire line replacement, about seventy six thousand. Long jump pits, about one point two seven million dollars. Parking lot renovations, thirty two thousand, and then privacy screening and fencing, nine hundred and seventy one thousand six twenty. So a total of about fourteen point seven million dollars spent in bond funds last year. Again, these are not the total costs, so for example, privacy screening and fencing, that was actually closer to eight million dollars. Um, this was again, just the F Y twenty five expenditures. Similarly, we broke it up by school, just so we could see by school where that fourteen point seven million went. The majority went to Atkinson for that event center. But other than that, most things were pretty spread out. So when we looked at cafeteria remodels, all schools received cafeteria remodels. Um, long jump pits, five of our schools received long jump pits and those types of things. So we can just see through, you know, each of these schools, how much was spent from the bond funds. And just to kind of show pictures of our bigger projects, so cafeteria remodel project, again, about eight million dollars. These are just some pictures, we updated our furniture, had some graphics on the wall, those types of things for our cafeteria. The safety and security fencing, again, this year, we spent about a million dollars, but prior it was more. Uh, but these are just some pictures of the the security fencing that went up around each of our campuses. Couple pictures of our renovated event center with some basketball court setup. And then just some pictures of the long jump pits. So these are just some images of the bond dollars at work, if you will. So when we take a look again, the prior year, that was the presentation about six months ago or so. We took a look, our revenue for the bond, um, about sixty two million dollars. When you have interest and things like that, that add on to that sixty million dollars bond premiums, those types of things. The expenses in the prior year, prior to twenty four twenty five, was about forty two point three million. Gave us about nineteen point seven million remaining going into the twenty four twenty five school year. Brought in again, a little bit more interest revenue on that bond, on the money we had in the bank. The expenses for last year, they said, fourteen point seven million. Gives us a remaining balance of about five point one million dollars remaining for the bonds. So then what do we do with that five point one million dollars? We do have a couple encumbrances here, and encumbrances are money that that is allocated to be spent. About two hundred thirteen thousand dollars left to complete the event center. About a hundred thousand dollars of that is the retainage or really the carryover for the completion of the construction for the event center. And about a hundred and thirteen thousand of that is to complete the audio visual project, hanging the screens and the projectors. That's currently going on actually as we speak. So that's where those remaining two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars is. And then about three thousand dollars to complete the long jump pits. These have actually already been completed, but again, timing of payment and invoices and things like that just made it roll over to the the current fiscal year. So those long jump pits are all done, there's no more work to be done on them, just have to pay the bills for those. On here, when we take a look at the original bond pamphlet that was sent out to voters, we talked about going out to voters to repair, renovate, improve school buildings and grounds, including heating, air conditioning, roofing, flooring. We talked about improving learning areas, updating and installing fire, security, safety systems, purchasing instructional technology, school furniture, and purchasing school buses. So this is the original kind of language I took right from the ballot for the bond measure. And as we think about it, we don't, I I will say, we do not have any current plans for the five point one million dollars. Because we need to take a step back, we need to understand what is our instructional plan, what's the educational plan? And really think about how we utilize that remaining five million dollars. Because we've gone out for sixty million, we've spent that that fifty five million of that. We really don't have the option to go out for a bond anytime in the near future. So we really have to be strategic about that five million dollars. And so that's why I'm not coming to you with with current spending. We want to make sure that we engage stakeholders, we want to make sure we engage teachers and parents and board members of how we utilize that remaining five million dollars. Okay, so that was bond, the second part of kind of the the tax levies is the overrides. And so again, in November twenty twenty two, voters approved a fifteen percent override to our revenue control limit. So what that means is the state provides us with the revenue control limit. And the voters say, we are willing to increase our taxes a bit to provide some fifteen percent above that amount to fund our our schools. Overrides are approved for seven years. Okay, so currently, the one that we have is is valid through the year twenty thirty, twenty nine, this school year twenty nine thirty. But it phases out by thirty three percent in year six and seven. So if we did nothing and we let the the override expire in year six, in the twenty eight, twenty nine school year, we would only receive ten percent override. And in the last year, we would receive five percent override. So as we think about being strategic on if that's something that the board wants to consider going out for another override, we would want to do that prior to the phase out, so that we don't have to cut any instructional plans for that. So and generally, it's it's common practice for school districts to go out in year four. For us, it would be actually next November twenty twenty six. Um, just in case it doesn't pass, there's another opportunity to go out for for to, you know, again, try to convince the voters that this money is needed for our schools. The override amount, it is a a separate allocation, again, that's from the local taxpayers, but it's just added directly to the M and O fund. So when we shared that the budget presentation last time, that amount was in that M and O fund. The amount for the F Y twenty five override was about thirteen point seven million dollars. When we take a look at how we expended that money, well, full day kindergarten was about two million of that. So as you know, the the, we talked about for the budget, the average daily membership and the kindergarten students, that even if they attend those first one hundred days, even though first through eighth grade count as one A D M, kindergarteners only count as point five A D M because the state only funds it at halftime. So we use our override money in order to provide full day kindergarten for our students. The next piece to that, which is the biggest piece, well, I'll say instructional supplies, a smaller portion, about three hundred eighty seven thousand. And the remainder of that thirteen point seven million dollars is for class size standards. So this is what allows us to keep our current class size standards. When we take a look at the math here, it's about a hundred and forty teachers that are funded from this, which is about twenty percent of our teaching staff. So if the override went away, we would have to take a look at looking at class size standards increasing by twenty percent. And so that could range anywhere from kindergarten classes at thirty all the way up to eighth grade classes at forty. So we can see the the importance of this this override and why it's important to our budget. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Dr. Etheridge. If you could go back to the to the slide presentation that showed the items that were covered for the money was was expended, because sixty million is a is a lot of money. Um, and this was expended over the period of beginning of twenty twenty. Because, um.
Sorry, Madam President, let me interrupt. So are we looking at the slide for like where it just talks about the like this slide? Or the slide that's breaks it up by project? Because by project, this is just F Y twenty five. So this isn't from the beginning of the bond, that's kind of what we talked about at the the one.
It's the remaining.
This is just what we expended in the in last year, twenty four twenty five school year.
If we could go back then to the amount.
Okay.
I know there's, um, I'm I'm gonna say throughout the entire year, January forward, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of question, a lot of irate parents, um, wanting to see more either gyms or other types of sites or improvements to their sites for their schools that have been that have been promised. The amount, the amount pretty much up until the the balance that we're looking at today was in its in its entirety expended, it was all spent. But there were questions, repeated questions as to how, what. So I thought it was, this is, it's very important for those in the audience, for those watching, um, that we listen to the meetings, come in and participate, because these questions were repeated throughout throughout the year. And as we can see, the items went to overall school improvement. Now, with the items, with the exception of the items in twenty twenty five, there were items that had been approved prior to this administration or prior before I came in in January. So kind of tying our hands, it it just period had been expended. And there was a rush of activity uh in the fall between October and December to make sure that everything, you know, had been expended. Uh, which is something that's that's, you know, for applying due diligence, it's just not something that uh, school district should be should be doing, because as a result, and we're looking at the at the balance, but we've also encountered because of the rush to get things done before January. We had a lot of a lot of errors, a lot of mistakes that took place that we're still paying for. There were also, um, I think, nobody wants to argue that there's no need to, you know, for an improvement or upgrade to a gym or a building of or anything in the playground. Uh, however, we do have what we call board policies, right? We're guided by that, those are like the rules of what we can and can't do. And especially over finances. So it's not like I come in and I can just write a check and say, you know, here, Ms. Cantú, um, this is what what is gonna go for. There's, there's the process, there's the, there's procedures. Um, and that is the administrative piece. There's, um, I think you mentioned that, um, I think you did, Dr. Etheridge, uh, mentioned in your conversation and presentation about the process of feedback, you know, engaging, you know, what it is that we're looking for, how we can best utilize our our money strategically and effectively uh, to avoid the the mistakes that we've seen, you know, approaching during this year. We mentioned, I think, if you go back, there is a the development, I think there was a gym, the the civic center, the additional funds that we have to expend, because we did have an engineering firm that came in, designed it for us, the upgrades, we're gonna remodel. However, there were some overseeing unforeseen errors that happened in putting the the building together, will be the remodel. We didn't have the infrastructure to be able or the ability to put up such as the screens that we have here. For a civic center, I mean, that's gonna be the the, that's the main purpose of a building for that. The event center and events. So we kicked off our a, you know, our year, invited, had a full forum, had all the sites there. It was important for us to have the technology to be able to to have this event. So moving forward, I just wanted to make sure that our audience, people, those and the, those people watching uh, on YouTube, our stakeholders are aware that there is the process. It's not just, you know, either a board president or superintendent just deciding what it is that that we're going to to get. Thank you for this presentation. Does anybody have any questions? Because we have a period.
I do. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Garcia.
Yeah, speaking to that, I recall.
I didn't see, I'm sorry.
I do recall that, um, we did have a committee. We did have stakeholders involved. We did have the contribution from the county, I believe that was two million dollars. So the meetings were being had, the stakeholders were involved, the committee we had to also participate with that process were involved. Um, I'm not sure which errors you are referring to, if you would please elaborate.
We have, and and I can. There are, in fact, what we're discussing right now is the bond override expenditures that were approved in the fall uh, in that hurry, in that crunch. And I just mentioned one, a major one, that's an additional two million dollars to to. In other words, we have to expend an additional two million aside from the money that's been assigned to it. And that was the conference center. So the infrastructure was not the engineering firm overlooked or missed the fact that we had to provide the infrastructure. So it's an unforeseen, uh, it's something that typically doesn't happen, uh, but it did happen. And those are the types of errors. There was a gymnasium, there was a site that was very upset, actually, there were two. But these are not things that we're able to anticipate in the override, because it wasn't brought before the board for board approval. So some of the items that we're discussing and we're approving right now, not to say that those are items that nobody would like to see happen, it's just that we have board policy and the process. We have a board presidency, we have, we have an administrator that administers. And we employ P L C, the professional learning communities, which means that there's gotta be some communication. Um, but that those decisions were not brought before the board, were not discussed.
Um, I believe that they were brought before the board, because I was here during that time. And I also recall that this event center is for the community. A place where our students, our scholars, our children, our families are able to participate in this venue that was basically what they wanted. And we did comply. And is is every project perfect? Absolutely not. But just to reiterate, the bond money was approved for that. And, uh, I was here, I know we did. Uh, but again, we just wanna make a clarification that this is and continue to be, will continue to be for our community and our scholars to have a venue where they can play, where they can um, engage in sports and activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. We've been over these items, I'm gonna say, maybe this is like the third meeting that we have on it. And, um, there were, we had to come back to the board and we brought a revision, because there were items that were found to not have gone through the process. So when you say, I'm not arguing the discussion of requesting the bond, although I didn't support that bond on that vote. Um, I just, we have, we have a lot of need, I understand that in our district. I'm never gonna say no to the additional money, we could always employ them. However, when we have our families that are living paycheck to paycheck, we have to keep our stakeholders in mind that are paying for the bond. I just don't see myself asking for an additional, you know, increase in their mortgage payment when they're already struggling. Do we need it? It's here, we agree, it was employed. I went along with that, I supported that after that. However, it's the items that we were addressing right now that were expended in fiscal year twenty twenty five that were not brought before the board. In fact, there was one site, one school site that was upset because at the thought that we might not be approving, because it was something that had not been included in the original plan. I am talking, so you couple that amount, what was the amount for that site in the materials for the gym?
The total events of it?
Twenty twenty five, it's included in this amount.
Four point three million, and there's two million that we use the the county funds for. So about six point three million was the total cost for the event center.
So there were, there were some items here in, that were not approved by us, but they were approved last year by the previous board and administration. But they did not follow that protocol, were not voted up. And and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, we can, as the meeting goes on, I think that we'll be able to learn more about those, the lack of those procedures being uh being adhered to. And the reason, and I'm gonna just reiterate, the reason that we have elected school board members is because we are here to advocate for our stakeholders, be it our children, be it our families. Uh, but it's, I think I've I've explained this before, where it's not just me coming up and reading or creating an agenda of things that I'd like to see happen. I need, I would facilitate our board to engage in conversation about utilizing our funds strategically, because there's a lot of need, especially in and around behavioral health and mental health needs that need to be addressed. So although we focused, especially during COVID, remember, I think I wanna set that that background tone as well. This all happened during COVID and we just expended sixty million dollars. And we have four, four percent of our population is not able to read and write and do math at their grade level. When I mean that we, our job is to engage in conversation, to ensure that the administration of the funds is being used effectively or most effectively, it's to meet the needs of those stakeholders. And we should have, and we're going to, invest and be more strategic about it and invest the dollars to provide resources for the learning and and increase the student achievement, academic achievement of our kids. But those are, I just wanted to make sure, I'm not talking about the entire plan. It's needed, nobody's gonna argue that. But when we don't adhere to board policy, to the board procedure, making those types of decisions without the broader conversation, without sharing this with our community, we make mistakes and we're paying for those. So when I look at the five million dollars additionally, I don't know, I don't know what else is gonna come up. I I think we had an additional two million dollars that will, I look forward to learning more about uh, as the meeting progresses, but that, it adds up and those are millions of dollars. Does anybody have any other questions?
Hi, everyone, thank you, Madam President. Um, just so that I'm understanding and keeping up to date with all of this information. So it's sixty million dollars starting November twenty twenty. Um, and it looks like fifteen million sold in spring twenty twenty one through twenty twenty four, so that's a total of four years. So that would be forty five million, right? Forty now with the five million that we have left concurrently. So that'd be forty million in four years.
Madam President, uh, board member Hernandez, so it would, so we, the voters authorized it in November of twenty twenty. And so then in that spring, we went out and actually sold the bonds. So when the, when the voters, when it's on your ballot, you're voting to authorize the governing board to sell those bonds. And so how you sell them, we could have sold it ten million each year over six years. We could have done thirty million one year and not sold again for five years. So it depends on how you want to, really depending upon what your plans are for expending those funds. And so in twenty one, we sold fifteen, twenty two, fifteen, twenty three, fifteen, twenty four, fifteen, for that total of sixty million. So that's how the the sixty million came about. And really, when you sell bonds, it's it's a loan, basically, and the the tax, the money that you're paying in your taxes, that's what's paying back the investors that invested in that bond.
Got you, okay, thank you. So we have fifteen million right now, five million, I'm sorry.
Five million, correct.
Zeroes. Okay, thank you.
And moving and moving forward, just along those lines of that, uh, due diligence. I'd like to also explain something else that happens, that's able to happen while we're expending uh the millions of dollars as we did over the last few years. Um, is that our current, our standing general operation, operating budget for the district has, what I refer to them as buckets, sources, right? Funding sources, different, some are restricted, some are not. So, but I may be able to to uh move around the money to be able to utilize, to make sure that I'm able to expand and focus on utilizing that money effectively. I use it in uh in to fill the needs of one of those buckets, let's say. So it allows us, you know, to to have a little bit more money in our general operations budget for operations. So what happened over the last few years, there was a large growth in, and we could at the time, because on top of this, this, these monies, we also had, well, we had the the COVID monies. And those were, remind me, S R funding, S R funding that was.
Madam President, about a hundred and ten million dollars.
A hundred and ten million dollars on top of the sixty million dollars that we had in bond and override. We had a lot of money, which is great. And and we did utilize that by by uh creating, developing a broader infrastructure at the district office, so that, you know, this is a time that we're not always gonna have, but we were able to create, um, many positions, many positions, uh, some of which, again, not adhered to, if we have a pay scale, a lot of things happened in between, but we had a lot of money on top. Not adhered to, if we have a pay scale, a lot of things happen in between, but we had a lot of money on top of that. I wanna make sure that um. I tend to be somewhat conservative when we discuss uh general operating budgets and then we have SR five, you know, and then COVID. So we had at a time that we're, it's, it's not gonna repeat anytime soon because of the. You know, we're dealing with certain uncertainties, I'm gonna say, uh economically. And then adding to that equation is the decline in enrollment. We, I think we were discussing maybe before we were being conservative that we might not, uh we might lose four hundred, we've been averaging. What I, what looked like to me like five hundred um students every, every year. And it ended up being seven hundred. I knew that because the current conditions, everything that's going on, there's a lot of multiple factors, you know, addressing it nonetheless. And so there is what we call a general auditor report. That um that is available at the state site, you can look it up. And it talks about, it kind of, you know, I, I like the circle pie uh reference. And it, it divvies up the pie in terms of how we utilize our spending, how our funding. What we're funding. Our transportation, the letter grades mentioned in there, um. So. There is a committee that, that provides oversight to this. And they're anticipating a few school districts falling into um into um. Not so great conditions, you know, this year, next year, because of those decline in enrollments, you know, that, that, that these public schools are facing. So. It's, it's different times and I think we just, um, I wanna make sure that we, we understand. You know, our roles, that we understand our funding sources, the opportunities that we have. And that we've gotta be diligent about expending those resources. I mean, I get my paycheck, paycheck at home and I say, you know what, I, I wanna get all this, but in reality, I can get what's highlighted. And our families are struggling right now. Um, thank you, Dr. Etheridge. Ms. Kandu.
Thank you, Madam President, uh members of the board, uh. Mr. Watson, everybody in the audience, Dr. Etheridge, thank you very much for your presentation. Actually, she bit me to the question. I saw sixty million dollars and then fifty million dollars and I thought, yeah, we have forty five million dollars left. But it was fifteen million dollars every year, right?
Madam President, Vice President Kent, yeah, so fifteen million in twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. When we add it all together, that's the sixty million and throughout that same time, we spent fifty five million. So right now, we're currently moving forward in our fund of about five million dollars.
Uh than- thank you for the clarification. And the other question is. Um. How do we determine? The amount that we gave every campus? Because I see that there's some that have. Huge amount of money and others that don't. How do we determine how? Every. Campus have a need.
Madam President, Vice President Kent, uh. There was a, like a planning session, I remember prior to selling the bonds, and this is kind of before I was involved in, in. The, the business side of it, I was in federal departments, but I do remember like a, a, a planning session of the bonds. And kind of a wish list type thing, I think we did a similar thing about a year ago, where people kind of, I. We'd be nice to have a gym, it'd be nice to have an event center, it'd be nice to have some of those things. And from those choices. That's where I think some of those decisions came from. With regards to the bond projects.
Thank, thank you very much.
Ms. Kandu, I just wanna share, I don't think you were here, I think in twenty twenty, when we had that, it was in the fall. And again, there was in the absence of a strategic plan for our district. It wasn't um, uh, we didn't arrive at and identify these items based on the priorities. Uh based on a plan, but it was more of a wish list and it was introduced that way. And I'll never forget. The stickiness that we were asked to, of course, I'm, I'm gonna wanna jam, of course, I'm gonna want, these are all great things, but. But they weren't well thought out in terms of uh. How that was gonna help uh the student achievement. Thus why we, the absence of that as well, but.
Uh the uh. Thank you, Madam President. The other question is, uh it's on page four. All these projects there are on this particular screen for twenty twenty five, or they were paid in twenty twenty five. When do they start? The. The project.
Madam President, Vice President Kent, it, it's gonna vary, um like you can see the cafeteria motto, most of that ex- took place in this, in twenty five. But the privacy screening fencing that started in twenty two? Twenty three? Twenty three, twenty four school year, so that started prior to that. So some of these things, similar to what we had with the encumbrances, may have rolled over into this year to, to pay for in twenty five.
So these are projects from twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, they were carryover for, to be paid on twenty twenty five.
Madam President, Vice President Kent, two, yes, I don't know that any of them went back to like twenty two. I think maybe there might have been a few in like twenty two, twenty three. But then some of these might have been in twenty three, twenty four, the bulk of starting the project. But we don't pay until we fin- we pay along the way, so some of that expenditure goes.
That was my question, that the projects started. To a year or two years prior for us coming onto the board. And I just wanted to let you know that it was already. Decided and budgeted. Right? I am of a taxpayer as well on this community and I always have high respect for education. There's no time that there's a bond override that we don't vote for it because education is important for our community. And uh. Sometimes it's, it's interesting because uh it's not how much money we have. It's how smart we spend it. And I see that um. All these projects were taking place before. The table turn on the board. And when you make those kind of decisions. You end up affecting the community. And I've been. Transparent with them. So. For that, I. Thank you very much because you actually did help us inform our community how their money is being spent. And um transparency is very important and I'm here for that. That's my only goal for this district, to be transparent on the money. And to provide our students with the best education. So if we have money, we need to invest it in our students as well.
Yeah, these discussions were actually held in um. I'm sorry, were you wanting to speak, Ms. Garcia?
Yes, these discussions were held previously during strategic planning. I just want everyone to know that they did not just pull it out of thin air. It had been uh discussed thoroughly. Thank you.
And just for the record, um there was no strategic plan that was drafted. Um, we still don't have one, we're working on it.
You were absent, I believe the first time you were absent.
Um no.
Yes, you were. I was there, I know that, but I'm not going to argue.
Thank you.
Because I do know I was there.
Nonetheless, I think to my point is, we have to apply the due diligence and make sure that we're adhering to. Um the transparency piece, which means that we are, like today. Uh we're required by law to share back to the community to show explicitly how we, we utilize that money. How we made the decision to come about, to expend it. Wasn't so strategic because if it had been, we would um. We have up there. Where is, I think you're talking about the privacy screening fencing, that. It, this document just evolved and kind of met needs along the way because we had the funding available. So Uvalde took place and there was a shooting that draw, drew the attention to all of us, you know, for public safety. And so there was, uh you know, parents obviously were, were upset and requested some, something. Uh that would help feel that, that we were protecting, you know, you know, their, their children. Um so that's how that evolved. Um so therefore, if it had been a, a well thought out plan, we had certain, you know, the way we were going to spend it. Uh but it was a kind of like an evolving document, I think throughout. But you know, uh based on the needs of the during, during that time. Uh but. As well as the um, so we're looking at the sixty million, hundred and ten million is our funding. And aside from our general operation, our operating budget, which is, what is the total amount of that budget?
Madam President, probably between capital and, and M and L, probably about a hundred and twenty million.
Okay, a hundred and twenty million on top of that annually because that's our operating budget. So you add all that together and, and then we equate uh the intuit, the um academic achievement of our, of our students. And of course, there was COVID. Um and then there was a creation of a lot of other positions to help offset, to help reach uh our, our youth. And um we were never able to actually provide, I think we made different attempts, hired different um entities. Uh board members that um ran field operations to help try to recruit some of those families back. Uh but we were never able, at least when I asked the question publicly several times, we were not, we never had the data. And maybe because it was so loose, because it was during COVID, but uh we weren't in, uh there weren't. I was not able to get answers to my questions regarding the uh, how many students we had online and how many we were actually teaching hands on. Um then we had also on top of that, I think the issue of the um. Um. Of our general operating budget, uh we acquired a new company that we ended up um procuring for an, for additional years. And was quite expensive, so I think it was something that we, we were able to make it work because we were able to work with the budget. I'm just saying that moving forward. We don't have that leeway anymore. So I don't know, coming into this year, what, how we were looking, we were going to pay and manage. Such a very top-heavy, uh you know, administration. Um with considering, taking into con- in, into consideration the dwindling amount. Of the uh, of, of the kids that are not attending every year. Uh and the um dire need that we still hear parents advocate for. Mental um bullying, health, behavioral health, to be, you know, um assistance. And so if we don't have a plan in place that says, you know what? Let's erase this pie, let's change it around so that we make sure that we're creating the fund, the, the resources, because we can. We're just gonna have to cut elsewhere, right? To make sure that we're addressing those needs. So when we're not mess, you know, we're not addressing those needs, kids are leaving the district, going on to other. Uh districts that it might feel, might be offering something that we're not. Uh the constant complaint that I, that I've heard. So we wanna change all that. And make sure that we're listening to the parents, we're engaging them, that we're developing a strategic plan, that we're utilizing. The funds, the funding sources that we have strategically.
Um also, um can we also keep in mind that for the strategic planning, the principals and administrators were also involved in that discussion. Here at district office. And in reference to mental health, I've been asking Mr. Watson very specific questions regarding services for our scholars. And the fact that they experience so many types of adversities, how do we address that? We don't have social workers, or we might have one. But we also at this time have interns, which I still haven't received an answer for. Because as we know, not one social worker or intern can address an entire school.
Totally agree. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. And I wish I could have heard that much from you during the six years while we were here.
Excuse me, but I've been advocating for social workers since two thousand twelve. Thank you.
Perhaps not strategically, because if we were, we'd have, because we have a budget, an operating budget. That we are able, I was not an officer, but it's the board president. Uh working with the rest, facilitating this with the rest of the board, having an inclusionary conversation. About being strategic about how we address and expend our funding.
Well, I will, I will add, no, I appreciate that, but I will add that in our previous, with our previous administration, we did have social workers at every school. And I do understand the funding uh concern about that. So. Uh I don't know what you're referencing, but we did have them and it worked out really well for our scholars.
It, thank you. And maybe you, you uh were in a better position to be, to, you know, have your ear in the ground. Because my understanding was, the only thing I got to question was the agenda, which was sometimes not provided. But I will, it was so convol- the positions were so convoluted as to who was doing what, because it's like playing musical chairs.
Dr. Perez has been in charge of the social workers this entire time, and his door is always open. I would encourage you to speak.
I'm still, I still have the floor, Ms. Garcia. Let me finish out my thought, uh because I do still have the floor.
Absolutely.
And so. Now going back, you know, the, the con- the, the confusion that was caused by playing musical chairs with physicians, not very strategic. But, but because we have the, we had the funding at the time. I'm not gonna be the dead horse, we understand, I think we, we know what we've, uh what's taken place. My focus is, is to trying to take this. In the future, in terms of how we're gonna be strategic now. And if we would have applied that due diligence to those questions from January now to now. We could have even impacted the current uh budget that we just approved. So that, however, our meetings were not so um, so productive. Uh because we couldn't even finish or get through a meeting, um uh to much more discuss anything else, but I'm looking forward to that. And I'm looking to engaging all of us and being present for the strategic plan that we're all gonna be drafting together. Just one additional note, the uh, the, the renovations for the uh privacy screening and fencing. Um after, after Uvalde. Um. The state uh is requiring the school districts now uh provide an emergency prepared, preparedness uh plan. We put ours together uh in December of this past year. For the sake of meeting the uh, we're no different and I'm, I'm going to assume that a lot of the districts. That uh put together a plan for emergency preparedness that we've gotta be practicing. Uh hands on with local law enforcement. Um that we, we were not able to do, but we did expend money towards public safety. Uh so I wish that we know, it's, it's again designing a plan um that it's all encompassing uh as we move forward. Thank you, Dr. Etheridge, thank you for your presentation.
And also, Lydia, I'd like to make.
I'm sorry, uh would you like to speak, Ms. Garcia? There is a process in progress.
So what I wanted to make reference to is the fact that we do have. A department here that is led by Dr. Perez. He has been amazingly overseeing his department, the social workers when we had them. Um he has a staff that is highly qualified to provide services when needed or when asked. Or when community members or scholars uh go to his office at the safe and caring office. Uh so I would invite those board members who are not aware of the services that this district does offer to please um. Speak with him, have a conversation, find out what we had that worked. Find out what we have now that works and find out what we no longer have. That hopefully funding can reimplement. Uh the services go a long way and as we know, social work is extremely important. And yes, we were dealing with a lot of things back within COVID. Uh but I would again invite everyone to have that discussion with Dr. Perez. I don't know if he's here. But I would seek him out. Thank you, Dr. Perez. You have done a, been doing a remarkable job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. And um what I'm looking for uh for regarding that. Is not that our board members have individual conversations about what's working, not working, but more of a comprehensive conversation. About how we can put everything together in place so we can um. Be strategic about our focus, so it impacts the student achievement. So it's not like. One department is doing great and the other one's not working, that's what PLC is all about. So and that's something else that we'll be addressing throughout the meeting or perhaps even future meetings. Thank you, Dr. Etheridge.
Thank you.
And so this is the uh public uh hearing regarding the um. Um. The bond expenditures for twenty twenty five, and we do have a call to the public regarding these bond expenditures in the presentation that just took place. And I have uh one call to the public regarding the um, uh the budget, which is the. Bond override expenditures? Ms. Moreno? Oh, for the regulars and that, okay. Alrighty, okay, thank you. So if there's no any um, no questions regarding our bond override, then we'll be moving forward. Uh and I do have. Before we begin the other, I do have an announcement. Uh for the record, it is six fifty seven. As I, before I proceed and continue to proceed on the agenda, I just do want to announce that for everyone's safety. Uh we respectfully ask that no one approach the diets during the meeting, during. uh we respectfully ask that no one approach the diets during the meeting, during recess, or after the meeting adjourned. This includes walking past the podium, that's just for everybody's safety. And I want to share a board policy regarding public participation at board meetings. Uh the board invites the viewpoints of citizens throughout the district and considers the responsible presentation of these viewpoints vital to the efficient operation of the district. The board also recognizes its responsibility for the proper governance of the schools and therefore the need to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner. The board therefore establishes the following procedures to receive input from citizens of the district. Uh A, any individual desiring to address the board shall complete a form, request to address the board, and give this form to the superintendent prior to the start of the meeting. Uh the board shall uh be responsible for recognizing speakers, maintaining proper order, and adhering to any time limit set. Questions requiring investigation shall be referred to the superintendent for later report to the board. There was an additional part of the um and I'm looking for it. If considered necessary, the president shall set a time limit on the length of the common period in order to ensure that each individual has an opportunity to address the board. The president may also set a time limit for individual speakers. Uh in item D, personal attacks upon board members, staff, personnel, or other persons in attendance or absent by individuals who address the board are discouraged. Policies KE, KB, KC, and KED, which make up the the bulk of the uh board role, uh elected school board members, are provided by the board for disposition of legitimate complaints, including those involving individuals. Upon conclusion of the open call to the public, individual members of the board may respond to any criticism made by an individual who has addressed the board. Presentation for unsolicited services will not be permitted. And with that, so there's no other calls to the public, I'm going on to the uh item S. No, uh we're, this is um not not for this part of the uh of the meeting. So the consent agenda. Do I um, I move that we adopt the consent agendas presented, do I have a second?
I second, Madam President.
And I will proceed to a roll call vote, and uh Ms. Rosa Cantu, how do you vote on the consent agenda items?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Romero, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Garcia, how do you vote? This is item F, consent agenda.
Yeah, um I just wanted to make reference that our board is still an illegal board and board members still violating Arizona revised statutes, and with that being said, I will refrain.
Okay, so no abstention. I mean, we have an abstention, please let the record reflect, and I vote aye, and motion carries. And now we're going on to action items. We've got a uh presentation, we've got the approval of the fiscal year twenty-five annual financial report, Dr. Esbridge.
Madam President, governing board members, Superintendent Watson, executive team, all those in the audience, long time no see. But we're here now to present the annual financial report. Um so this is, as we take a look at, we know that the budgets are really what we anticipate to spend each year, where the annual financial report reports on what we actually spent last year. So we're taking a look at uh July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and what we spent for this year. These annual financial reports, there are several of them, uh but they are due October fifteenth of each year. As a reminder, when we look at fund accounting, and and Madam President, I was just gonna kind of turn it over to you, your explanation of the fund and the buckets, and that was great, it was perfect. The fund is kind of a s- a sum of money that's set aside for certain objectives, so we have different buckets of money that can be used for different purposes. We have over a hundred funds, so there's quite a few different funds, some are bigger than others. Some of the main ones that we like to talk about, maintenance and operations fund, this is generally our biggest fund, used for things like salaries, benefits, utilities, consumable supplies, purchase services. We have classroom site fund, that's used for compensation increases, class size reduction and performance pay. And then we have district additional assistance, which oftentimes is better known as capital. That's used for building, land improvements, furniture, equipment, technology, vehicles, those types of things. Before I get into the different fund types and the balances, I do want to talk a little bit about budget-controlled versus cash-controlled accounts. So when we look at funds, there are certain funds which are budget-controlled. And these are amounts that are set by the legislature, set by some allocation, maybe the federal government for federal funds, but is set by some allocation, and we're allowed to spend up to that budget amount. The cash in the bank, of course, is important, but the the amount of cash in the bank doesn't determine how much we can spend. It's the budget that's provided to us by the agency, whether the state or the federal government. So some examples of that, maintenance and operations, our capital budget, classroom site fund, and a lot of most federal and state grants are also budget-controlled. On the flip side of that, you do have some cash-controlled funds. And these are determined by how much money you have in the bank, that's what your budget is. And so these funding sources, adjacent ways, bond building fund, auxiliary, gifts and donations, these are amounts that we don't know. Um you know, gifts and donations, we don't know how much is going to be donated to us each year, so we can't set a budget for that. Our budget is how much cash we actually have in the bank, so that increases as the cash increases and decreases as we spend the cash. So let's take a look at some of our our biggest funds, so maintenance and operations. So this is by object code. An object code is really when we look at those salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, and others. So we take a look at salaries, of course, those are the salaries. Benefits, the sixty-two hundred, when we look at the annual financial report, those are our benefits, so medical insurance, uh payroll taxes, those types of things are under the sixty-two hundred of the benefits code. Purchase services, we have sixty-three hundred, sixty-four hundred, sixty-five hundred. Sixty-three hundred is purchase services, like consultants, audit services, registration for conferences, those types of things are sixty-three hundred. Sixty-four hundred are property services, so those are things like utilities, water, sewer, repair and maintenance, those types of things are sixty-four hundred, and then sixty-five hundred are the other purchase services, so transportation, um if we pay tuition to a private school for students of special needs, that's out of the sixty-five hundred code. So those are all kind of grouped together in the AFR, in the annual financial report, under purchase services. Supplies are sixty-six hundred codes, those are consumable supplies. This actually, this actually also includes things like electricity, um fuel, those types of things fall under supplies too. And then sixty-eight hundred is other services, so if we have principal and interest payments when it comes to capital funding, or like dues and fees, fall under the sixty-eight hundred code. So if we look, take a look at maintenance and operations by those codes we just talked about, we can see the majority of the M and O fund, so sixty-seven point eight million in salaries and twenty-three point three million in benefits, that's the majority of that fund. Purchase services, about eleven million, supplies, about three point six million, and then in that other category, about one hundred seventy-one. So when we take a look at the total M and O expenditures for last fiscal year, it was one hundred and six million, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars. So when you look at the AFR in general, and I'm just kind of highlighting, it's a lot, you can look at it, a lot of small numbers, you know, small pages with a lot of numbers on there, so just highlighting it, one of the ways to look at it is by the object code. Another way to look at it is by the function code. And this kind of tells you, you know, back to President Hernandez in the Auditor General's report, how we spend the funds, whether it's for instruction, whether it's for student support, instructional support. So when we look at instruction, that one thousand code, that deals with interaction between teachers and students, so in the classroom, anything that's related to that, that's under the the function code one thousand. Student support, this, these are your nursing services, your psychology services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, those types of things are under that student support, that twenty-four hundred code. Instructional support, those are your curriculum, you know, your specialists. Um curriculum, it's improvement for curriculum, those types of things that deal with the instruction, but aren't directly teacher-student focused. General administration, that's gonna be your superintendent's office. School administration, those are your principals and front office staff. Central services, that's gonna be your um HR, business services, IT, information systems, those types of things are under twenty-five hundred, the central services. Operation and maintenance of plant, that's going to be your buildings and operations, that's going to be your safety, your security. Those types of things fall under the operation and maintenance of plant. Transportation, of course, that's our buses and our transportation department. Then we have non-instructional services, for this category here, it's three thousand, really thirty-one hundred, because this is referring to food services. There is um kind of a clause in the statute for food services. In order to use those federal funds, which we do, we have to have a a food service match, which is a calculation based on how many uh lunch lunches we served in the prior fiscal year, times the multipliers. So this four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for food service, the majority of food service comes from food service funding, but we do have a requirement to match some of that in maintenance and operations. So we use that by some of our lunch monitors, some of the utilities that we use in the cafeterias, those types of things, is how we get to that match. Community programs, these are for our, in M and O here specifically, these are for our preschool programs. If if for students of special needs, those teachers there are coded under the instruction, because we get funding for those. If they are not, so students, how we have the preschool set up, is some of the students are students of special needs, other students are not. And so it's some of the the expenditures for those students that are not special needs, that's considered a community program. Desegregation funding, this is some additional funding, we get into our M and O fund based on a a court case back in nineteen seventy-eight or something like that, which found us out of compliance with federal regulations for EL learners, and making sure that we, you know, desegregate that learning, and so these funds are used for uh translation during parent-teacher conferences, we use them for some attendance clerks to make sure we're registering those kids appropriately with the float form, those types of things are how we use our our desegregation funds. Teachers utilizing the SEI model, that's all in the desegregation funding. And then K three reading, we get a a portion here, about a million dollars in M and O. Um we we um fund our move-on when reading specialists, part of that, out of that K three reading bucket. So again, again, the total M and O expenditures, one hundred and six million dollars, but we can see this is just broken down now by function, where the first one was broken down by object, so you can kind of see, again, most of our funding is is going towards instruction, as it should, um and then go down the list to kind of see what what the rest of them look like. So let's compare a little bit, from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five, we see, you know, some some numbers which are pretty typical over over the year. Couple ones that I do want to point out, though, student support, that twenty-one hundred decreased by almost thirty percent. That is not because we decreased the services, again, remember, these student support is psychology, uh psychologists, OTs, PTs, nurse, it's not because we decreased the services, it's because we moved the funding for the school psychologists out of M and O and into the Medicaid fund. And we were able to do that based on the savings that we are going to have over the next couple of years as we phase out the employee childcare program. So again, even though that number looks like it's decreasing by quite a bit, the services are still there, we didn't decrease the services, it was just how we are funding that moved. Similar with instructional support, one of the things about maintenance and operations, that's part of the maintenance and operations, is um students of special needs, and there's a portion in there for students of special needs. And when we look at IDEA funds, which is the federal grant, we get for students of special needs. Most federal funds are gonna have a supplement, not supplant clause, and what that means is we can't replace state and local funds with federal funds. The federal funds are intended to be used on top of what we currently provide the state and local funds. And there's different tests that the auditors will do to make sure that we are in fact supplant, um supplementing those funds and not supplanting those funds. With IDEA, that test is, is did we spend the same amount, either in aggregate or on a per pupil basis, the same amount for students of special needs out of our state and local funds that we did the prior year. So as we take a look at that, because of some of the things, when ESSR was around, we had moved some of those expenditures over to ESSR. This is a similar situation in twenty-two hundred with certain coaches and and positions in special services, is we moved some of those out of M and O and into IDEA, so that we make sure we're not so high up, the bar is so high up, that next year we have trouble making what we call that maintenance of effort. So that's why we kind of moved, and and again, President Hernandez moved some of that funding over to be strategic and make sure that we weren't putting, setting ourselves up for a situation that we were gonna be hard to to maintain that maintenance of effort. So that's why you see that decrease in the instructional support, again, that wasn't a decrease in services, just a shift in funding. Um everything else there, community programs, again, just the the increase a little bit, thirty-three hundred in that that preschool program there, we had some grants that we were utilizing prior, and now some of those expenditures went into um M and O. Okay, so our next fund that we're gonna talk about is classroom site fund. It's a little bit easier to talk about this, because there's not as many expenditures here. Classroom site fund, we pay for to increase um the employee compensation, as well as performance pay. So all of the expenditures, when we look at the objects, go to salary and benefits. And so the total classroom site fund expenditures for FY twenty-five is about seven point four million dollars. Similarly, breaking it up by function, we have the, it, most of it went to the teachers in the classroom, about seven million of that. But then we also have some, like, speech-language pathologists out of that student support category, which received some classroom site fund dollars, as well as we fund psychologists and OTs, PTs, some of their salary with classroom site fund. Similar with the specialists under instructional support, and some of the pre-K teachers out of the community programs. So again, this just breaks that classroom site fund by um function. Taking a look at these numbers, you can see that the numbers in each of the categories went down from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five. The reason for this is because, remember, we changed the timing of the performance pay payment. So we used to pay it in June, which would have been part of of FY twenty-five, but because we don't get the results back for the letter grade until November, we changed that payment now to come in December. So that's why the amounts you see have decreased in FY twenty-five, they will go back up in FY twenty-six, when we have both the performance pay and the evaluation pay in the same fiscal year. So that's why you saw that decrease. Third fund to talk about, capital outlay. So as we take a look at capital outlay, they split this up a little bit different, because again, capital outlay is used for those um you know, vehicles, furniture, equipment, the longer-term purchases, so they don't have salaries and benefits out of this fund. Instead, we have um instructional aids, library books, textbooks, those those kind of objects under the uh the capital outlay. Short-term non-instructional software subscription, so our accounting software, our uh student information system software, those types of things come under that short-term non-instructional software. Property, again, this is the equipment, vehicles, technology. And then redemption of principal and interest, this is not, to be confused with the bond principal and interest, that's a different fund. This is from capital, and so when we look at principal and interest in this, in the capital outlay, we're talking about the long-term software subscriptions. So GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, changed the way that we report those longer term, if we sign a contract for more than a year, um for like a a software program we know we're gonna use for more than a year, and we save a little bit of money on the front end by signing that that three-year contract as opposed to the one-year contract. That, the the uh GASB considers that actually debt. And so instead of coding it out of like a software subscription, they code it out of debt, and so we pay that principal and interest for that. So the total capital expenditures, um as we take a look at the the capital outlay by object, that's about eight point six million, that five million is coming mostly from construction. Um and we see that over here on this slide here, when we look at it by function. So again, by instruction, four hundred and ten thousand, student instructional support, administration, operation of plant, student services. That facilities acquisition and construction is a big portion of the capital outlay um fund. And then again, that debt service, which we talked about, that principal and interest, so this just lays out those eight point six million dollars by function. Taking a look at the capital outlay comparison from the year prior to this year, the biggest one that I want to comment on is the facilities acquisition and construction, of course, jumped about a hundred and eighty percent, uh moved from one point eight million over to five point two million. These, this construction projects included um flooring projects, included K two projector projects, included as part of the cafeteria remodels, we did the bond for the ta- the furniture and the graphics, but we also installed televisions around the the cafeterias. So the cafeteria projects went into the facilities acquisition and construction. And similar to what we talked about, the bond, it's hard to say we spent one point eight million on a project here and then five point two million on projects here, because some of these just cross fiscal years. So some of these we started in FY twenty-four, but paid them in FY twenty-five, so that's why you see that that five point two million, that jump from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five. So those are kind of the the bigger numbers there on that screen. So now let's get into all of the other funds. And again, we have a hundred of them. So I didn't list all one hundred of them, but I did list several of them and some of the bigger ones so that we can see how they work and what the fund balance is. And so when we take a look at the bucket of money, okay, how we determine this is you have your bucket of money and you have the beginning fund balance. You have the amount that's beginning. You add in the revenues, take out the expenditures. There are certain situations, generally when we look at funds, we talked a little bit about you can move some funds from different buckets depending upon what that is. Those situations are actually few and far between. Sometimes different, like you could have multiple funds that pay for different, the same expenditures. But oftentimes, you can't just take money out of one bucket and put it into another bucket. There are a few situations, and we'll talk about that when we look at the the next slides, where you can do that. But for the most part, you can't. But either way, if I put money in the bucket, it adds to the bucket. If I take it out, takes it away. That's going to equal our ending fund balance. So let's talk about some of these. So M and O, that's our first our first fund that we take a look at. We started with about nine point nine million dollars in there. Our revenues came in, and this is from state, local property taxes, those types of things, at about a hundred and eleven million dollars. We spent that hundred and six million dollars which we talked about. And then we had some transfers out. And if we remember when we passed the budget, one of those transfers out was to the Energy and Water Savings Program. So remember, we can't use M and O funds to pay for capital expenditures, but the one exception is I can take some money from that bucket and move it over to the Energy and Water Savings Fund to pay off the debt that we have that we've incurred by putting in the solar panels and the electricity and those types of things. So that's kind of the transfer out of there. There were a couple of transfers into M and O from employee withholdings, which we'll talk about in a minute, and a community service program. But when we take a look at that, that gives our ending funding balance of twelve point six million. Now, this is what's a little bit interesting, is that if we remember the budget that we passed last last board meeting, we anticipated a carryover about twelve point one million dollars. So and it was a little bit less, but after all, we've said and done, twelve point one million dollars is the expected carryover for next year. But our fund balance is twelve point six million dollars. Remember, this is a budget controlled fund. So I can only spend what the state tells me I can spend, and they tell me I can spend twelve point one million dollars. But I actually have twelve point six million dollars in the bank. So this is what we call dead cash, basically, is we have cash sitting in the bank that we can't spend because the legislature says you can only spend twelve point one million dollars. So that's where, just so you can see where the budget controlled funds come in, is that even though we have that cash in the bank, we can only spend what the legislature tells us we can spend. Classroom site fund is another example, although this one, when we look at our beginning fund balance, add our revenues, subtract our expenditures, the ending fund balance is actually a little less than what the state says we can. So we actually have less cash in the bank, but we can spend what the legislature says we can. So our budget is closer here, I think, to like twenty million dollars. Capital funding, we started with fifteen million, added seven point one million, subtracted off the eight point six that we spent, so our ending fund balance is about thirteen point five. This actually does match, the cash in the bank actually matches what our our budget is, carry forward is for that. Adjacent ways, beginning fund balance, we added about one point three, have our expenditures there, get about five point five. So we don't have to go through each of these, but I do want to point out federal projects, for example, started at about four point seven million dollar beginning fund balance, added about twenty five million dollars, expended twenty three million dollars. And then we have this transfer out of about six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. That transfer out is for what we call indirect costs. And so when we look at federal grants, we generally, when we have direct costs, that means somebody's salary. I know this person is working one hundred percent for Title One, that we're paying their salary out of Title One. We have an after school program, teachers are running that, we're going to pay their salary out of Title One, we're going to pay their benefits, we're going to pay their the supplies necessary for that after school tutoring program out of Title One. But some of the other costs that come in are a little bit harder to calculate. For example, if I have a tutoring program after school, well, my lights need to stay on longer. So my electricity bill is going to go up a little bit. I have time cards that payroll staff now has to process those time cards. So those expenditures go up a little bit. So the federal government allows a percentage of that federal grant to for us to take it from that grant and put it into what we call the indirect cost fund in order to pay for some of those expenditures. So that's why you see that transfer out of those federal grants as we're moving that money from that federal project bucket into the indirect cost bucket. Okay, similarly with food service, that's really a federal program as well. So that's indirect cost coming out of there for that transfer. Looking at some of these other funds that we have, so the transfers for community schools, this is things like the employee childcare, part of that is community schools. But we had a a fund on the books for about eighty three hundred dollars that has been on there for years and years and years and years. And so what the U S F R, which is kind of the guidance that we use for funding, is if that program ended, we can transfer that money over to an M and O. So that's what that is, is that's closing out that program that we didn't have anymore. But we take a look at like our tax credits. So we know that it's taxpayers, we can donate to the schools for extracurricular activities, started with about four hundred thousand dollars in that fund, made about fifty two thousand dollars in revenue, spent about twenty one thousand. So it gives us our ending fund balance of four twenty seven. We see that indirect cost there, that's that one point six million between the state or between the federal programs and the food service program. And then the last one I'll talk about is the employee insurance program. So the employee insurance program is when we run payroll, we withhold from, we know that that as a benefit to our employees, we pay the insurance premiums for our employees. So what we do when we run the accounting system is we have a an employer withholding. So that money gets taken and it gets put into this employee insurance withholding category. And that's what we use to then pay the premiums for the insurance. So again, it's when you look at your paycheck, you see employee withholding and employer withholding. That employer withholding is going somewhere. It's going to this fund, which then is used to pay for the insurance. The the U S F R, again, the guidance that we have to use in order to do our accounting requires us to whatever interest we earn in this account from the bank, we have to transfer that over to our M and O fund. Which again, is a little bit like, hmm, because, remember, I can't spend that money because the legislature tells me how much I can spend. So if I move that cash over to M and O, we create that more dead cash. So that's why we need to be strategic into how we're we're moving that money into there and when we're doing that. So just a side note. But with that, that's really what I have. I know there was a lot of information, but I do like to, well, I love talking about finance, so I could do it all day. But I also just just think it's important as you're looking at some of these these annual financial reports and these forms that look like a foreign language to a lot of people, kind of what what the behind the scenes is for them.
Any questions?
Yes, Madam President. Members of the board and all of the audience, Mister Dr. Ettrich, thank you, thank you very much. I think it's it's very, very interesting, your presentation, not only for us, as for members to understand the different buckets that we that you actually played with in order to sustain this organization. I thank you for that. And this is so important for everybody to understand the different buckets. One that I I'm concerned about is that I see the continued decline, it's capital. I always been very, very careful with capital money because it's money that we cannot recuperate. And if we continue spending that bucket, we can get it back. So any suggestions that for the future, what can we do to eliminate those expenses on capital?
Madam President, Vice President Kent, too, I I think that's an excellent point. I agree with you one hundred percent is that we we take a look at, you know, here's the fund balance here. Our revenue is seven point two million, but we spent eight point six. So we're again spending more than we're taking in, we're digging into our savings account for that. I think it just comes down to being very strategic in what we need to do. There are certain expenditures that are a must. If an air conditioner goes out in the classroom, we have to replace that. There's not really a choice for those, some of those things. Some things where we might be able to like upgrade, that might have to be a little bit more strategic in how we determine, do we really need that at this time? Is that how we utilize the the spending the best to get the results that we want for our students? So there is a lot of discussion in terms of before we we spend this money, we have to really take a look at, does it fit in with the strategic plan? Does it fit in with, is this going to impact student achievement? Because that's why we're here. So and of course, having having, you know, nice classrooms, having furniture, those types of things are important, but it is, you know, something that we have to pay attention to. One thing that I will say, as we talk about transfers from one fund to another, you can transfer M and O funds over to capital. However, remember, M and O funds is where we pay salary and benefits. So those are the types of things that we have to really think about is that we can really make a lot of things work, but it's a trade off. We're not really going to get any more money, especially when it comes to declining student enrollment. So we have a finite amount of money, it's declining, and so we just really have to be very strategic in how we spend that moving forward.
Thank you, Mister Dr. Ettrich. And also, I I developed this this interest on capital money because many, many years ago, a superintendent explained to me how that works and exactly which words, if something happened that we need to take emergency action, capital is the one that respond for. So that's where I'm very conservative with capital money. I know there's many other buckets that we need to.
And Madam President, Vice President Kent, too, if I may, one of the things that you may have heard recently in the news is the capital funding lawsuit that it it went in favor of school districts, that they know that the way our system is set up right now, right now, it's very grant based in terms of, if we have a broken air conditioner, we can reach out to the school facilities board to get approval, and they will pay for that types of things. But there are, you need to really be in a state of, you don't have air conditioning in order to get that funding. And that's not fair, because we need to try to keep up some of our, you know, our facilities and things like that. So the 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 courts did rule in favor of the school districts. The problem is, is that, one, there's going to be an appeal, we almost guarantee. And two, the the time that it's going to take to create a system to where we're fairly compensated for our capital, I'm going to imagine is going to be years down the road. So I I don't, even though that was a win for us, I don't know that there's going to be relief anytime in the near future that we're going to see a lot of capital increases, so.
And that's what I mean when I say to be conservative until they make make up their mind or make a decision on 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 that area. All right, thank you so much for your presentation, Dr. Ettrich.
I have a question.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
So what comes to mind, talking about funding and balances and where it comes from? We currently have two superintendents that we're paying for, correct? I mean, everyone knows, so I'm just being transparent, correct?
Madam President, Board Member Garcia.
With that being said, I'm going to get to my question. We also have executives who are also being paid on for leave of absence, for whatever reason. So for the superintendents and for the executives who are home, being have been sent home on leave, what fund does that come out of?
Madam President, Board Member Garcia, that is currently coming from the Maintenance and Operations Fund, the M and O.
Thank you. And to that same point, at a given time, at a given time, we were, we employed four superintendents previous, two coming forward. I'm sorry, I'm going to please, out of order, out of order, there is a proper place, and we will continue. So there were several meetings that have taken place and where we have addressed a lot of that. I'd like to talk about the the four positions that we've had, because when I mentioned in our discussion with the bond override, the S R funding on top of that, the the general budget. We had four superintendents. So we changed, we never, we created new positions, and so they were assistant deputy. We had the attorney that was hired, that was filling the position of one of the assistant superintendents. This is where where the confusion, at least for me, came about, where as to who was being paid where. It wasn't something like this. We obviously had a budget, but there's no, there's no change, no difference. I think moving forward, we've, I think the reason we're focusing on a budget is to make sure and taking the legal process or adhering to a legal process that protects or is respectful of everybody's personnel matters, right? But nonetheless, I do want to draw that conclusion, at least adding that point, that we've always had those four positions. And this is very different. Every school district has it that way. We just happen to have made those decisions all in a vacuum in the fall, or we made the changes.
Also, I'd like to add.
I'm sorry, I I still have the floor.
Okay.
So just to finish the point, we, the the personnel matters decisions, I'm glad that we are moving forward and streamlining. And this is something that our board, I think, you know, we've discussed this before at the previous meetings. The role of the board is to make sure that we're here, we prepare for the agenda, that we adhere to board policy, and we make decisions based on on what's going to impact student needs, families' needs. And we hire a superintendent so that we can administer and run the district. So we, as board members, don't have any power. The only power we have is when we're all here individually, together, I mean, together. Individually, we have no power. So the only person that we can hold accountable is is sitting right here, and he's a superintendent. And he oversees the administration, the administrative piece of it. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to be.
Excuse me, I do have something to add. Number one, thank you for your concern, we hear you, this board does care. We legally officially have a superintendent, Emma Hottage.
Thank you, Dr. Ettrich, we will go into a recess. Thank you, ten minutes. Please let the record reflect that it is seven thirty four. Thank you. Please let the record reflect that it is seven thirty-four. Thank you.
We are resuming the governing board meeting. We are resuming, and the, for the record, it is seven fifty-one. And we had just gone over the presentation and approval of the fiscal year twenty-five annual financial report. And I don't believe we had any more questions. Thank you so much for your presentation. And because it is an action item, I move that we approve the fiscal year twenty-five annual financial report.
I have one more question.
Fiscal year twenty-five full level annual financial report.
Derek, can you tell us where the funding comes from for the investigators?
Who are investigating reports.
What is that?
Dr. Etheridge.
The funding come from?
Do I have a second?
Question?
Do I have a second?
I'm asking a question.
And I'm doing a vote.
Yeah, one second.
Second, thank you.
From Lydia.
It looks like Ms. Ms. Garcia.
Are you voting? Is that a nine?
Yeah.
Lydia, I still have a question. Please let the record reflect that that is a nine.
We've been talking about finances, Lydia.
Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote? Ms. Hernandez. Point of order. If you know what that means, Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote? Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Romero, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Garcia, how do you vote?
The question of funding for the investigators.
I am taking a vote.
Are you going to let Derek answer the question?
The vote. We are in the middle of a vote. I have the floor. You have to wait until afterwards.
I did ask that question.
She did ask the question before you asked him for the motion.
Ms. Christine.
Ms. Hernandez, it is very disrespectful for you to just talk over Ms. Garcia and not let her speak.
Number two, I am.
Ms. Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez.
I am going on to discussion.
I will have to ask you to let Ms. Demise Garcia speak.
For another five minutes, it appears we need it. Thank you so much. Please let the record reflect that it is seven fifty-three.
Lydia, this had to do with the funding. Why couldn't that question be answered?
On the proposed bylaw amendments submitted by the Arizona School Board Association, the ASBA governance team, Mr. Watson.
Yes, Madam President, Governing Board, the Arizona School Board Association Governance Committee, with unanimous support from the ASBA Board of Directors, has put forward a series of bylaw amendments aimed at enhancing clarity, ensuring consistency, and incorporating some substantive, substantive, substantive changes. Last year, feedback from member boards indicated the volume and complexity of proposed bylaw changes presented simultaneously was difficult to process effectively. In response, the Governance Committee chaired by Chris King of the Vail Unified School District and Pima County Director undertook a thorough review and refinement of the proposals, the proposals. So the revised bylaw amendments are presented to the board. All changes submitted by the Arizona School Board Association in the, the content are shown in red, for deletions in blue, and new for new wording. And while many of the proposed amendments are intended to improve clarity and consistency, several include substantive, substantive, I'm going to give that word one of these days, revisions. And contained in, and here are algunos, some of those changes. So for example, eligibility of office, it clarifies who's eligible to hold elected office with ASBA. Meeting protocols, representation, executive oversight requires full board ratification of the executive director's contract with a designated, within a designated timeframe. Committees and leadership establishes standing committees, defines their duties and leadership, and outlines the appointment authority. Emergency and vacancy procedures, voting and quorum. It authorizes electronic voting, increases quorum requirements, and sets timeframes for board action. Caucus alignment requires caucus bylaws to align with those of the Arizona School Board Association. And that rules and procedures for voting on the bylaw amendment proposal are, the following rules are set forth by the bylaws. So each Arizona School Board Association member district is entitled to one vote on the proposed amendment. The vote must be submitted using an official online form. The decisions slash vote must be an official governing board action, and that's why we're bringing it to you now. An affirmative yes vote of two-thirds of the ASBA member districts and boards is necessary for a bylaw amendment to pass. And so the governing board can determine if they would like, as a, as a unit, to determine if they would like to cast their, their one vote on the proposed Arizona School Board Association bylaws presented.
Thank you. And those were discussed extensively at the Arizona School Board Law Conference a couple of weeks ago. And there were necessary changes to ensure that And there were necessary changes to ensure that candidates for leadership positions and throughout the Arizona School Board Association were vetted and were engaged and were members, had been members of the, of the organization. So with that, it requires a board action. So I will move that we approve the proposed bylaw amendments submitted by the Arizona School Board Association Governance Team. Do I have a second?
I say no, Madam President.
Yes, please. Did we not take a yes vote at approval at the last meeting?
A yes vote on the proposed bylaw being presented.
Ah, the word yes, okay. Thank you. I rescind that original motion. And I made the motion and amended that we, I, the motion that we vote yes on the proposed bylaw amendments submitted by the Arizona School Board Association Governance Team. And with that, do I have a second, Ms. Cantu?
Second, Madam President.
One more? Thank you. I rescind that motion. And I will make that motion one more time. So I move that we vote yes on the proposed bylaw amendment submitted by the Arizona School Board Association, and that we authorize the superintendent of the Cartwright School District to vote on our behalf, or submit that vote on our behalf.
Will Emma be casting that vote? Will she be coming back? She is our superintendent.
Do I have that motion correctly? That we have the superintendent's office submit that vote on our behalf. Thank you. And do I have a second?
I say no, Madam President.
And Ms. Cantu, since we're there, I have to proceed with the roll call vote. How do you vote?
I supposed to say yes?
We're approving.
Yes.
If you're so wants to. Thank you. And moving on to Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Denise Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you. And I vote aye, and motion carries. Thank you. And going on to item H, reports summary current events, Mr. Steve Watson.
Yeah, Madam President, Governing Board, it's honored to be able to serve here in the Cartwright Elementary School District. And just some congratulations are in order for just some of the great things going on here. A shout out to John Afflong, and they have a really great teacher over there, Shannon Bishop. And we don't just recognize her awesomeness, but we want to thank the attorneys from Birch and Cracchiolo for honoring her through their Star Teacher Program. They recently presented her with a $500 check and also gave a $250 check to the school because of the great work that she's doing. And it's, it's an honor, like I said, not just to recognize the work that she's doing here, but for people outside the community to be able to see some of that great work. And so, thank you, Ms. Bishop. And recently, we had a water main break at Peralta over a weekend, and the, the team came together and had everything squared away and had some plevers onsite to be able to have us going to school. And it was, it was great to be out there. And I want to give a, a very specific shout out as, as I was on campus that following Monday and visiting some classrooms. At our Cartwright Back to School Conference, I shared a few stories, and one of those was about zombies and one of those was about vegetables. And so I want to thank Ms. Lewis over in first grade, when, when we walked into her classroom to drop off some water, she, she gave me a book, Zombies Don't Eat Veggies. And so she cited the Cartwright Conference and those stories. And so just, I just appreciate her and the work that's happening over at Peralta and then just the, the good nature and the support from, from the teachers we have doing some good work. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that. And I do want to recognize we have so many principals here. And this is a principal recognition month, and I want to thank our principals for, for their hard work. There is a, a day. So in May, we celebrate teachers during a day. We celebrate principals during, during a day. But this is a month set aside to recognize the principals and the hard work that you do to support our kids every day. And so I want to, on behalf of Cartwright Elementary School District, say, say thank you for that hard work. And so with that, and I want to thank the board for, for, for having these great people do some, some good stuff here.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Going on to item I, other information discussion items, we have an update. And I believe we have, Mr. Watson, would you like to?
Yeah, we are, Madam President, Governing Board, we are in kind of the, the final stages of a court case that was brought against, Cartwright was one of the defendants, and we would like to invite from Udall Shumway, Mr. Joel Sanis to come up and just kind of give us an update of where we are. Like I said, we're in the final stages of that, and we can get a, a little bit more information about where we've ended up.
Thank you. All right, there we go. Thank you. This is relating to the lawsuit filed by plaintiff Cecilia Moreno in Maricopa County Superior Court, including against the district, Board Member Lydia Hernandez, Board Member Cassandra Hernandez, and Maricopa County Superintendent Shelley Boggs. The lawsuit was filed January twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five. It was amended February thirteen, twenty-twenty-five. Ms. Moreno cited the statute that bars persons who are immediate family members from being members of a school board if they reside in the same household within the previous four years. She cited in Arizona statute ARS fifteen dash four twenty-one. The first event in the proceedings was this, was that Ms. Moreno sought a preliminary injunction before the case was resolved that would prohibit Cassandra Hernandez or Leader Hernandez, it was unclear whether it was one or both, from participating in board voting or deliberations while a lawsuit was pending. She also sought in her complaint of final judgment that Board Member Cassandra Hernandez should be removed from the board based on ARS section fifteen dash four twenty-one I. On April twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, the Superior Court Judge Michael Gordon denied the request for a preliminary injunction and set summary judgment proceedings with a briefing schedule for the parties to brief the legal issues regarding the application of the statute. After the parties filed the motions for summary judgment, Judge Gordon ruled on September ninth dismissing Moreno's lawsuit, finding that she was not entitled to wait until after the deadline to challenge Cassandra Hernandez's election to file the lawsuit. So the court ruled on statutory basis and interpretation of ARS section fifteen dash four twenty-one I that to proceed under that stat, that statute was not applicable, that the challenge should have been an election challenge or a nomination challenge. The current status of the case is, after a motion for summary judgment is issued, parties then file an application for a final judgment. That has been filed, and it will be a matter of days before that would become a final judgment. The judgment is appealable.
I have a question. So based on
If you please wait just to be recognized, Ms. Garcia.
Yeah, based on that information, it does not mean that they are innocent of violating the Arizona revised statute. What it means, and what you said and what I heard, is that the judge dismissed it. He did not adhere to the entire statute. So he decided what he decided because of the election process. I heard that. But that doesn't mean that they do not continue to violate Arizona revised statutes, because as we sit here, they are still in violation, correct?
I would speak more to what the remedy is, and the judge's ruling was based on what the remedy is for an alleged violation of the statute. The judge didn't make any findings of fact where there was a violation of the statute. The judge ruled on what are called stipulated facts, where the parties agreed for the purpose of the summary judgment motion, what the facts are, so the judge didn't need to make any findings of fact whether there was a violation of the statute.
I do understand what the summary judgment consists of. I'm just making it clear that although he did make his decisions, it, and you're right, it is appealable. So with that being said, again, they are still in violation because the entire statute was not addressed by the judge. I'm just making reference to that.
Board Member Garcia, I don't know, I'm not sure what you mean when you say the entire statute wasn't addressed by the judge.
Do you have the statute with you?
I do.
Would you mind reading it, please?
There are three elements of this, there are three elements of the statute. It's ARS section fifteen dash four twenty-one I, J, and K. Section I, five, fifteen dash four twenty-one I bars simultaneously simultaneous service on the board by two persons, where one was an immediate family member and lived with that, with the other board member within the previous four years. Section J makes it, allows an election or a nomination challenge for those, for anybody who wants to challenge that either the nomination or the election of a board member if the facts are that they lived with one another in the previous, their immediate family members have lived with one another in the previous four years. So those are the, that, that, those are the statutes, and the judge ruled that for a party to wait until somebody is seated on the board for the election deadlines, the election challenge deadlines to expire, they can no longer contest somebody's simultaneous service on the board.
I appreciate that. So at this point, if someone wanted to appeal it, they certainly could.
There is a direct, there is a, a right to appeal any decision of a superior court.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I simply want to state that there was, I think, ample discussion, arguments presented. For those that were in attendance, were able to, to see that. And it's unfortunate that, you know, this is just, it's, it's the politics. I'm not even going to venture and try to interpret. I am not a judge, nor an attorney. So I will, you know, I, I, I'm supportive. I'm glad of the, of the decision that Judge Gordon made. Thank you.
Madam President, Governing Board, if I may, just, I want to thank, say thank you again publicly. I thank you privately. It's just great to have good representation. If people don't know, just school districts work with attorneys in all types of situations. And you've been very professional and very fair, and we appreciate the work that you've done to represent the district.
Thank you. Our firm is honored to represent the district.
Thank you.
Madam President, Governing Board.
Ms. Cantu.
I just want to say thank you for your, for your work. And we had not have, oh, conducted business throughout the year because there was a concern about it. So now this is disclarifying and help the board to move forward on business and do what is right for our community and our students. Thank you so much. That is a great, great opportunity for this board to work together and do what's the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Going on to item number two, the Cartwright Regional Professional Development. We've got presenters.
Yeah, Madam President, Governing Board, we are committed to bringing back to you the work that we're doing to support student learning. And recently, we had the opportunity to, to have, we call them colloquially Friday Workday, and an opportunity to just provide some professional development and growth for not just our teachers, but all faculty and staff here in the district. And Ms. Larson's here to just share a little bit about what we did this last go around.
Thank you. Good evening, President Hernandez, Governing Board members, Superintendent Watson, executive team, and everyone watching. Happy National Principals Month, by the way. Educational Services is proud to share just a few highlights from Regional Professional Development from September nineteenth. As we know, professional learning is critical in strengthening teaching to achieve scholar proficiency and growth. And our team designed to, in order to continue to gain momentum, making sure that we're focusing on our three goals, which are focusing on our PLCs, K three literacy, and fourth through eighth grade math. During the planning, the team was held to what I believe would be called relentless in gathering feedback from many stakeholders, one of them being Shannon Bishop, who Superintendent Watson mentioned a few minutes ago. It is something that we take very seriously and is very important to our team. Achieving goals means digging deeper into those ADE standards, reinforcing the use of our refreshed GDCs, so just our guaranteed and viable curriculum, making sure that every child at every school is getting exactly, not exactly, similar instruction that is following our pacing and utilizing our governing board resources, because that is a goal of ours as well. A few of the sessions to name would be our Reveal Math, Lexia, and Uply, our newest governing board approved material, which is a phonics-based research phonics program to develop competent and confident readers. All educators receive PD on utilizing our new assessment system, FastBridge, to monitor our students' progress throughout the rest of this year, so that will help us continue to grow. Teachers share that they appreciated the differentiation, although there will be much more coming forward, and being able to take some key ideas back to their classrooms right away. A key highlight, teachers and leaders, learning from one another and sharing best practices and collaborating from across the school. So our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math teachers collaborated at Castro, so thank you. Learning more about breaking down the standards, looking at student work, and also how to access and utilize the GDC a little bit more in depth. One teacher shared this as her piece of feedback, utilizing data, being given tools to increase the rigor of my questioning, and seeing how the standards drive our instruction, we will continue to improve our teaching practices. Looking ahead, we will keep professional learning practical, collaborative, and focused on scholar success. So thank you for giving me this opportunity, and it's my pleasure to be here and answer any questions. I have great passion for this, so it's been a great opportunity for me to share this with you. No questions?
Thank you. Ms. Cantu?
Yes. Yes, Ms. Ms. Larson, I have a question for you. In the first hundred days, how many times we test students?
That is a large number. We do know that assessment is taking a lot of our instructional, too much of our instructional time away. With the implementation of DNA last year, our, our MIMIC is what we call it, that really demonstrates the learning towards standards aligned to our ADE Assessment ASA. So that was implemented last year, and our staff have done an amazing job taking district-created CFAs, so that was new for them last year. And now we have FastBridge and progress monitoring. There's a lot of assessment. That's the best answer I think I can give right now. There is a lot of assessment of our scholar learning. And so what we need to focus on is, what are we going to do with that information so we don't necessarily have to continue to do such a large-scale testing season, which is often.
So there's no specific amount of times that they, they tested during the first hundred days?
So during the first half of the year, we're going to, we would have the MIMIC one. There would be three CFAs in the first quarter, three CFAs in the second quarter for reading and math. Those are required. And then we have MIMIC one that we just wrapped up, and we'll take MIMIC two, again, that assessment that's aligned to the ADE Assessment ASA. That happens October, in October, eight days after we get back from break. We're at seven D, eight days of instruction until the AASA, once we return from break. So we really just, our goal is to continue to maximize every instructional minute that we can and hope that we're using that assessment and provide support and professional development and how to use that feedback with specific small group or even individual supports if needed.
During those times, do we engage the kids in different types of learning or different types of programs that will allow them to increase their, their test score on the, on the, on the next test, or do we just test them expecting that they can succeed?
Somehow just gain the learning? Yes. No, that's a great question. Yes. So the, last year, the team So the last year, the team spent a majority of our time looking at the G V C, our guaranteed and viable curriculum. Was everything aligned? Were we using our governing board resources? We really have, again, getting the feedback from multiple stakeholders, providing P D last year, doing different sessions with different groups. We've been able to refresh that and make it very streamlined, which is something that we've been speaking to, I think since forever. Um, but now we really do have that tool that's designed to keep everyone on the same pace. Our principals are doing a fantastic job of going into classrooms and looking to see is teacher A in alignment with teacher B? Where are they in the pacing? So making sure that they have the, whatever resources they need to be able to support their teachers if that's not happening. And they're fantastic. They reach out if they have questions and we use that information to monitor what our P D looks like with the amount of time that we have to be able to provide that P D. Our coaches are at schools. Um, we actually track that information, who's at the different P L Cs. I think the principals have definitely shared that they appreciate the support at that level, being in their P L Cs, working with teachers in the moment for that lesson that may, they might be teaching the next day.
What percentage of our district is, uh, has P L C in practice at the, at this moment?
Every single site has designated, uh, P L C time and every single site is implementing P L Cs. But what we're saying now right as our goal, one of our three big rocks, is doing P L C right. We were, we have P L C structures in place, um, clearly, you know, we've been working on that since I, I first started teaching here twenty-one years ago. We, we started that work then, um.
So P L C, it's a, a site from P D?
They can be combined. I mean, P L C really is what, how we do business. We're all a professional learning community. And so getting to the place where we're more efficient at that would be our, our next step. So, uh, P L C, moving from P L C light to P L C right. And we're providing professional development on that as well through, um, six of our schools, working through Project Momentum.
Okay.
Thank you very much. You're very welcome. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. There, there is a lot of information, uh, just within that presentation alone and it can be broken out thousands of ways. Um, but I do have a question. Uh, don't, no need, I think, um, it's more about, um, what are you finding, uh, in terms of, you know, conversing, working with the principals, working with the teachers? Any feedback from teachers that in terms of resources that perhaps we're not offering that they need or something that they've asked for? Um, you know, just moving forward, thinking ahead. That would be different, something that we're not providing.
Yep. Absolutely. Again, uh, again, thank you, uh, President Hernandez for the, um, question, great question. Governing Board Members and our community. Uh, absolutely. One of the things that, um, we're assessing is obviously, uh, looking at our resources as well, making sure that they are hitting the standards. I think we've done a pretty good job over the last few years, taking a look at the alignment between the state standards and what we're providing in terms of a research-based curriculum for all of our teachers. Um, one of the things that we have found in this process is that we have a wide range of resources and actually the challenge is really narrowing that down and helping teachers really be thoughtful about how we're utilizing those resources to hit those standards. So I think that's really is the challenge. It's not giving more resources, but really being thoughtful about making sure that we're using the resources that we have that are aligned to the standards, research-based, um, and that are also, um, going to hit that state standard. So that really is kind of the challenge now, and especially when we have twenty schools doing that work and engaging in that work. Um, there's a lot of room to kind of, um, use a lot of wide, different, different wide, uh, variety of resources. So that's really kind of the challenge for us now is really narrowing that scope. And I think, again, our team has been working on that. Our principals are also continuously working on that as well. Um, and I think, uh, one of the things that, um, I think has also assisted us in this process is also looking at um, our common formative assessments, using an assessment tool that's also aligned to measure that standard. Um, and then helping teachers to understand how is this going to be tested? By the time we look at proficiency, what does that look like in terms of the, of the assessment? So I think that's really kind of where the work is right now, is that struggle there.
Thank you for that. I, I just, it's important, I think, that we, uh, were diligent about, um, it's a lot that we're, and if we're changing aligning, um, making sure that we're being inclusive of that, of that feedback for those teachers. Just want to make sure that we're offering the resources that they need. Um, okay.
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. Thank you.
And going out, we've got item number three. And this is, um, the Governing Board Retreat. Mr. Watson?
Yeah, I just want to give an update. We, um, recently on September seventeenth had a Governing Board Retreat and, uh, a big shout out to Westmech. Uh, we actually use their facility. Um, if you've ever been to a Westmech facility, they're great. The work that they do is great. Uh, shout out to them. Uh, my, uh, senior is actually in their automotive program, so doing a little commercial for, for Westmech. But, uh, shout out to them and thank you for letting us use your facility. And so we had, uh, Julie Bacon, who was on the Paradise Valley Unified School District Governing Board for twelve years. Um, and now works for the Arizona School Board Association, come and provide, um, some training for, uh, for, for, for all of us. And it was really great to, to have her, uh, there and she speaks with an air of authenticity. She's, she's lived it. She's done it and she's, she's had the highs and lows of serving on a governing board. And so to have her be able to provide some, some training through the Arizona School Board Association, I think, uh, was, was really valuable. And, uh, thanks to, to our entire governing board for constantly being supportive and participating and being here tonight and continuing to participate. And, uh, uh, the Arizona School Board Association, which we voted to continue to be a member of, um, offers some very good supports and resources, uh, for example, the law conference that we were able to attend recently. And so, um, I'm happy to, to answer any questions about that, but, but thanks for everybody for participating.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Um, do I have any feedback regarding the, um, uh, the board, Governing Board Retreat?
Uh, yes, Madam President, members of the board, uh, executive team and all in the audience. I just remember one thing that it was said very clearly, I don't know. But, um, one of the directions that we received from, uh, from the, um, moderator was that uh, if any board members does prevent the board from conducting business, could be removed from the dais. If they don't cooperate, um, moving the, the meeting and, uh, and conducting business. So I just want to make very clearly that, very sure. I, I got that. That, that's one of the things, the big things I took from the retreat. It was great, able to ask questions, able to, um, get feedback from, from one of the the best organizations that guide board, boards in the right direction and follow policy. And they know it very well. So I just wanted to make very clearly that. And any of us, we are just another member of the community that if happened to not agree or, uh, just try to disrupt the business, can be removed from the dais. So just for further.
Be interested to read the policy on that? Thank you. And the law that would support that. Thank you. Point, just point of order. We had a lot of, uh, a lot of discussion. We had an opportunity to engage with each other, uh, to ask questions. I repeatedly asked, um, all of our, all of our board members to make sure that we, they were engaging and if there was something that they were in agreement with or, or in disagreement with, uh, to please speak. Um, there was really no, um, no conversation, aside from, um, from us asking questions for clarification. The Arizona School Board, uh, Law Conference was, um, we referenced that, uh, because during their lunch hour, they had some attorneys. You know, up at the, up at during lunch and, um, I think it was called Stump the Attorney. So coming up with scenarios in which, you know, uh, that, um, where they could employ and interpret, uh, and serve as, um, further clarification of the proper roles of board members. Which was great because I saw some attorneys out there that I, um, had seen before, but they were very quite professional in their, in their interpretation of it. Anne mentioned, uh, you know, uh, injunctions against harassment and really, um, I think what we very gently discussed, I think, at our board retreat, uh, was the fact for, you know, was the need, I think, for professionalism, respect, just professionalism in general. And that is something that, um, that naturally comes, I think, from engaging and conversation with each other. Uh, engaging at, you know, focusing on the work. I mean, we're really busy about the academic achievement and getting into, uh, you know, several of the points from your presentation, uh, Ms. Larson, uh, on how to do that, which I'm sure didn't even touch the tip of the iceberg in terms of something that we're going to comprehend. Uh, but I'm so much looking forward to working with the principals moving forward, so making sure that we, we're, um, uh, providing the resources and I feel very, very adamant about that. But again, we're, we're an organization that we look, we look around. We talk about every great leader is a teacher, every great teacher is a leader. We talk about the importance of providing an education. Why are we doing that? Why do we need our kids to go to an elementary school? Why do we need them to go, to go on to high school? Why do we need them to pursue a higher education? And even for us as, you know, as professionals within our own works or fields, there's always a need for improvement, a need for professional development as well. Times are changing and the positions change as well. And, um, I think it's, it's important for us that we are the examples of such leadership. We did talk about if there are any board members that aspire to running for higher office, everybody says, you know, you run for, for school board. You run for school board because it's going to teach you the rules. You, you get the opportunity to go to the Arizona School Board Association to learn the, to learn the, um, the rules by which, what you're going to utilize in rolling out and developing your position. So that when you run for a county or even state, that Arizona State House, we're governed by rules. We can't be in a committee and just speak whenever we want to because there's going to be very strong leaders there. They are not going to allow for that and very strict adherence to rules and, and, and the law. And, uh, in terms of behavior. I just want to ask everybody that, um, if you're really about improving our academic student achievement, that we focus on the policy that we have that's going to buy, provide those resources for all of our students and our families, including our staff. If there's something that we're not, um, addressing that needs to be addressed, we need to know that. And that's only going to come through engagement. Um, so I look forward to working with everybody. Look, um, it was just great all the way around. It was great feedback and the retreat. Um, my apologies, my formal apologies to, um, to Julie Bacon, whom I'm sure with her many years of experience has seen it all as well. I thought I seen it all, but we're continuing to learn and grow. And, um, I'm going to continue looking. I think, uh, I also attended the Maricopa County, um, Arizona School Board Directors Meeting. And there was an individual there from the Gilbert, um, School District who had about six hundred credit hours of professional development. Um, I think I'm somewhere in the four eighties. I don't know. It, that, and, and I stopped, in all honesty. I think we've got to continue that because there's always something else that we can do to improve our performance. Um, and help us do the work that we hear, that we're elected to do for our families and students. And that is policy. And we, uh, you know, we were researching, researching, going through a stack of maybe an inch thick of that policy, uh, that I can even begin to, to address. I'm looking forward to working with staff on that along the same lines as we go and address our student achievement and everything else that we want to accomplish as priorities, which at this point we don't know because until we can have a cordial, respectful conversation, meaningful, intentional conversation, we'll get there. But I, I'm optimistic. Any other? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Sorry.
It's okay. Thank you.
Run me down.
Fellow board members, executive team, people in the audi, people in the audience and those watching, I'd just like to, you know, make comments on having participated, um, particularly this retreat, this retreat was amazing. I learned a great deal on how to, you know, pay, pay my due diligence here on the school board. And so, um, I'm very grateful for that opportunity. One of the main things, we started off, I love how Ms. Bacon started us off. She said, she asked us all, what is one thing that we can all agree on as a board that we have in common is our goal for the school board? And I think, well, we, we all agreed that for the betterment of this community, for our kids, you know, for the professional development. I think that stuck out to me so deeply because I feel like we've haven't had a good understanding as a, as a whole, right? Um, over, over goals for the school board. So that was very important to me. Um, it has just, it was just, it felt, it was amazing. It was an amazing experience. I also was able to go to attend to, to attend the luncheon we had in Scottsdale, um, with A S B A. Um, and that lady she referenced, um, so articulate. Uh, she is the, the district that you mentioned, right? Um, she, I, I told her, I am so amazed, six hundred hours worth of, you know, learning how to play her, how to play her role and, and do it and getting stuff done. Um, she was, it was an honor. It was, it was, it was a really big honor, um, to meet her and be a part of her table and dialogue. She knew every little thing. It was so amazing. Um, so anyway, I want to thank A S B A for what they do. It's very important. I, I, I'm excited to implement A S B A more into our community, not just in the school board. So I look forward to that and thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Watson, for your, um, for the, for putting that together and making us, helping us move forward. Uh, and, and I continue to look forward to continuing developing our roles and working together. And, um, that, with that, I'm moving, moving on to item number four, which is an Aleo Annual Conference Update. Um, we had an opportunity to attend an Aleo Conference and I, all of us, by a board policy, we, um, we typically report back, you know, what, what sessions we attended, how, you know, something that, that we walked away with, that stood out, how we're incorporating, incorporating, incorporating it here at the dais, uh, within our roles, uh, or, or that we're not. And so the only one that didn't have an opportunity to do that, that did attend the conference, um, was, uh, Ms., uh, Board Member Jennifer Romero. And wanted to provide an opportunity for her to report back, um, on that, um, on the Aleo Conference.
Um, at, at the Aleo Conference, it was a really great experience because I got to meet, um, lots of different board members from all around the country and that was a great experience. Um, it definitely gave me a, a good idea of what I want to improve the next time that I want, that, the next time that we attend. I can't re, I can't remember exactly the names of the, the sess, the session that I went to, but the, the one that impacted me the most was, um, it had to do with, uh, working within your community and, um, how to really connect with your community. Um, my bad. I didn't, I didn't think it, um, too well before, before speaking, but, um, I think, uh, the, what I, um, learned from most there was really speaking with other board members and hearing what, um, what they had to say about what, what's been going on in there, um, where, where they are. And getting from, hearing from those experiences, especially within those, um, cohorts.
Thank you. Uh, the Aleo Conference involved a few days, uh, a few days, um, in which, uh, had full day programming. So either you went to the breakfast, you went to lunch and you, you had, uh, opportunities to, um, to attend some, um, now there were also some, uh, some receptions. So that's where you had the opportunity to engage and, and dialogue with other, with other board members. Uh, but that programming, that programming throughout the day, the sessions are, um, there were several on policy. Uh, I think we divided ourselves up so that we could, um, you know, attend, kind of regroup and attend and have discussions back at the table so we could, and, you know, I guess exchange the ideas that we were all, that we had heard and if there was anything that, that popped out that we were not engaging in, we had, we had a lot of conversation. Uh, I want to thank our, um, those that attended with us. Um, thank you for the opportunity to, um, to join us for those lunches and engage us in those conversations, uh, throughout the day, uh, Dr. Esrich. It was just a great opportunity. I'm looking forward to, um, to others and I hope that we can engage our board members into attending, uh, fully at those conferences. So going on to item number, yeah, Ms. Cantu?
I'm a typical nerd and I will go to the sessions and I will listen.
I'm a typical nerd, and I will go to the sessions and I will listen throughout the day. But there was one specific session that I wanted to to mention. At this particular district, Yes Sir Money, they put aside a few millions of dollars because they were, they had a lot of families, homeless families. So what they did, they make him, they they tried to build a house for them. They helped them better themselves and and get on their feet and also own the house. I don't know how they distributed that money, but they were able to put aside millions of dollars to help those homeless families. And it goes to families that were out and students. That's how they responded to the community because their students were living on the street. So they decided to set aside certain amount of money and help them out. So it was a very, very inspiring session because all came from the from the district. And I can give you the the all the information on it. We don't have any Yes Sir Money anymore, but to me, it's, like I said, it's not how much money you have, it's how how do we spend it, right? So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cantú. And moving on to item number five, Mr. Watson.
Yeah, Madam President, Governing Board, we want to give a a response to a call to the public concern on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five regarding child privacy. We did a substantive review, I tried to get that word in again, review and found no evidence that any child or student information was compromised or shared. And so wanted to just provide an update to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. It's it's easy to come and and share a complaint. But you've got to, I would hope that everybody continues to remain interested in in the follow-up information. And thank you for conduct, having conducted that investigation regarding that that allegation. And item number six, request for future agenda item as information discussion at a future governing board meeting. I, Mr. Watson, I I think we're working on it, but we had mentioned at the retreat that we'd like to follow up with another board retreat to continue the conversation because we do have a lot that that we need to discuss internally aside from our roles and really deep, you know, dive deeply into into those roles and working together. So I'd like to make sure, I want to highlight that, that we are, ensure that we're working on it and we we can get something, you know, a couple of meetings done, either through study session or board retreats between now and and January.
Madam President, Mr. Watson, members of the board, and all the audience, may I request that we work on the future, I'm requesting to work on a strategic plan. It's very needed since we already got the results from the judge and hopefully we can all work together to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cantú. And something else that we did, we did discuss as well at the board retreat was taking those steps and moving forward, working with the with our education. Folks, our principals, discussing evaluations all the way around, continue to streamline and focus on district office and, again, looking for resources for our students. All right, so we've got those two.
I have a request.
Okay. Ms. Ms. García.
Thank you. I'd like to request an update on the pending investigations, which would most likely require or a special meeting or executive session. So that is a pending question that I've been asked several times. Also, in addition to that, there was recently a conference for our scholars, a suicide prevention conference. And so there were several students who were asked to attend. And it was going to be something that they would have been able to empower themselves, be empowered, learn, and be able to share with their peers. And this would have also included the Student Council, among others, the Wake Up Club and other clubs. But and so the conference would have been free. However, when transportation was requested, it was denied here. So I'd like to follow up with who dropped the ball. Basically, what is the process or the protocol, not necessarily pointing fingers, but what is the protocol in order to get transportation for such an important conference that would have benefited our scholars? And now they, well, it's no longer an option for them. So again, that would have fallen on Cartwright and the fact that the transportation had been denied. So again, what would that policy, not policy, but that protocol look like?
Thank you, Ms. García.
Madam President, Governing Board, García, I I'm not familiar with that situation, but we'll we'll find out.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd also like to, if we could get an update as to the type of activity, who, what, when, where, and how we can address it moving forward.
Also, pardon me, one other concern is I believe that the Wake Up Club has been around for years, and to date, they have not received their funding or reimbursement. So that might be another concern, that not might be, it is another concern for reimbursement since employees have already utilized their own money. And I know typically every year we've never had an issue with vouchers or the money being reimbursed to them, but apparently that's an issue now.
Thank you, Ms. García. Actually, I I did request for either a study session or a presentation to be done because I was never aware that anything that we were in the business of of serving as pass-throughs for block watches, that was new to me. Because we have a lot of block watches that we could be doing that for, and it's not, we're not here for one, but for all. But I'd like to learn more about that. So if we could look at that, see how that's set up and how they work, I would assume that we've got reports that we, you know, either invitations for parents that we could help disseminate to make sure that those, you know, that they're working. But thank you for that. What was the first one?
The, so, an invest, an update for the current pending investigations.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, and then.
We do have that on the agenda.
Okay, another item, actually extremely important to piggyback on what I was just talking about, the suicide prevention, to be able to find out who sponsored that conference, which I'm pretty sure I can do that too. But and and to be able to bring them here so that our scholars can be informed and empowered and be able to train one another. Thank you.
I am, I'm trying to think of, not in isolation, I think, going back to an earlier conversation about how if we could, if we could jot it down for future future discussion because that is something that's incorporated into a respective department that oversees that. So how do we ensure that communication is taking place, I've requested. We did have an analysis and a and a plan that was developed regarding a robust family engagement. It's not about picking, choosing, you know, cherry picking, but developing a robust family engagement through the Family Resource Center. It's something that's not a life and goal right now. Not to say that work is not being done. I just, we've got to align it so it's not working in isolation and it's working to help us achieve that 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 one, that central goal. So if we could, you know, put it there in that, in that as well.
And I think Dr. Perez would be a key person because this is after all what he has been working on and protecting. Dr. Perez is actually the gatekeeper of this program. Is he still here? Thank you. So to extract the information from him, I believe, would be extremely beneficial.
Thank you. Again, just bringing it back, just making sure that we're not working in isolation and that, you know, we incorporate it into what the work that we're doing moving forward. And yes, and we do have, going on to the the regular meeting here, we've got a, we have an employee request for a public discussion. So it is an item that's on the agenda. So to answer your question, it's on today's agenda. At this point, I I was a little bit concerned. I, we do have the regular and then the executive. Are we going to have a presentation first or? Please advise.
Yeah, Madam President, Governing Board, we have Aaron Brown, an attorney here to give us an update on on this to, I I will read from the agenda to consider and discuss the continued employment of the district's Deputy Superintendent Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, President Hernandez, members of the board, Superintendent Watson, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening. For this agenda item, what is before the board is consideration of a statement of charges as it relates to Deputy Superintendent Chief Financial Officer Victoria Farrar. First, let me kind of set the stage and then walk you through the statement of charges. Well, I'll set the stage and then talk to you about the process as it relates to a statement of charges and then talk to you about the specific statement of charges that's before you. First, under the open meeting law, Title thirty-eight dash four thirty-one oh three A one, discussion of possible discipline as it relates to an employee can't take place in executive session. However, under that same law, an employee has the right to request that the discussion take place in open session, which is what we are doing now per the request of the employee. And so I was asked to investigate concerns related to the CFO. I'm just going to refer to the employee as the CFO and have conducted an investigation and have prepared a statement of charges. Now, the way a statement of charges works is it's signed by the superintendent and then presented to the board for consideration. The board can choose to adopt the statement of charges or it can choose not to adopt the statement of charges. So what we are here to do at this moment is talk about the statement of charges. I will answer any questions that you have related to the proposed statement of charges. If the board adopts the statement of charges, then what happens by statute is it is sent to the employee. A notice is sent to the employee and the employee is advised that he or she has the right to request a hearing within ten days of receipt of the statement of charges. So you have the statement of charges in front of you. If you look at Section One, it identifies the relevant board policies and contractual provisions that are at issue. And Section One A identifies a now, one thing I want to make clear is these are allegations supported by evidence that was uncovered during the investigation, but they are allegations. And ultimately, a a either the board or a hearing officer will, if a hearing is requested, will hear the evidence and then make, if it's a hearing officer, the hearing officer would make a recommendation to the board, but ultimately the board makes the decision. So Section One A identifies a section of the adminis- or the CFO's contract that is relevant and particularly if you look at the last sentence, there's lots of commas there, so I was making sure I was speaking correctly. Administrator administrators shall act in accordance with all applicable federal and state laws, district policies. And that's the key in this case, administrative regulations and procedures as they currently exist and as they may be modified or created during the term of this contract. Next, we identify in Section One B violation of governing board policy G B E A, which is staff ethics. And it indicates in pertinent part, all employees of the district are expected to maintain high standards in their school relationships. These standards must be idealistic and at the same time practical so that they can apply reasonably to all staff members. It goes on, and I won't read the entire paragraph, but if we go down, it says the school employee B maintains just courteous and proper relationships with students, parents, staff, members, and others. D fulfills job responsibilities with honesty and integrity. E directs any criticism of other staff members or of any department of the school system towards improving the district. And then we turn to C, which is an alleged violation of governing board policy G B P, which is prohibited personnel practices. The statement of charges alleges that the administrator is charged with violating governing board policy G B P, which provides in pertinent part, if you could scroll down, please. It is a prohibited personnel practice for any district employee who has control over personnel actions to take reprisals against another employee for a disclosure of a matter of public concern by that other employee to a public body when the employee believes that there has been either A, a violation of law, or B, mismanagement, a gross waste of monies, or an abuse of authority. And then the final policy at issue is policy G C Q F. And it indicates that the administrator is charged with violating governing board policy G C Q F, which provides in pertinent part, certificated staff members may be disciplined for infractions that include but are not limited to the following categories. A, engaging in unprofessional conduct. E, exhibiting improper attitudes. And I, engaging in acts of dishonesty. Then if you look at Section Two, it contains the specific factual allegations supporting the statement of charges. And beginning in A, it goes through administrator's appointment as the district's Deputy Superintendent Chief Financial Officer since two thousand and twenty. It identifies two contracts, the current contract, which is the twenty-five twenty-six contract, and also the twenty-four twenty-five contract. The conduct at issue occurred during the twenty-four twenty-five contract. However, the administrator was offered a contract, I believe in December of twenty-four, which is unusual. Typically, the contracts are not offered until March, April of the year that the new contract will be entered into. But so there was already a a contract in place for this year, twenty-five twenty-six. If we can go to Section D, Paragraph Three of the administrator's employment contract, which we've already reviewed, that identifies the obligations that pertain to the administrator CFO. E, administrator overseas and is responsible for district business services department, which includes procurement, accounting, payroll, and accounts. F, Dr. Derek Etheridge, if we could scroll down, please, Executive Director of Business Services, reports directly to administrator. G, this is an important paragraph. The district, specifically the business services department, is required to ensure that all filings required by the Internal Revenue Service are made in accordance with IRS rules and regulations. Specifically, the district is required to file IRS Form nine forty-one and also to file IRS Form ten ninety-four C. In two thousand and seventeen, the district failed to file Form ten ninety-four C with the IRS by the due date, which resulted in fines or penalties for failing. which resulted in fines or penalties for failure to file. In addition, during the first two quarters of fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four, the district did not properly report wages on IRS Form nine forty-one. Therefore, although tax withholdings were remitted, they were remitted in the wrong period, this resulted in an assessment for late filing." Although the district made attempt, so once this, the, these events or issues came to light, the district engaged and an attorney to attempt to challenge the fines, penalties, or assessments. However, these efforts were unsuccessful. And the final result was a payment of approximately two point two million dollars in fines and assessments. "In July of two thousand and twenty-four, the administrator directed Dr. Etheridge to pay the IRS fines or penalties. Payment of the IRS fines or penalties was discussed in a superintendent and executive leadership team meeting prior to the payment being made. On July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, at the direction of the CFO, Dr. Etheridge pushed through the purchase orders to pay the IRS fines, penalties, and payment was made on August one, two thousand and twenty-four. At the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four governing board meeting, after payment of the IRS fines or penalties assessments had already been made, the vouchers for the payment of the IRS fines, penalties, and assessments were presented to the governing board for approval. Importantly, however, the governing board was only provided with the cover page of the voucher. And if you look at the cover page, it has a dollar amounts, but it doesn't say what it's for. And so on September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, our investigation has uncovered that it was not apparent to the governing board what was being approved as it related to these vouchers. Paragraph O indicates that the governing board was not specifically notified of the district's payment of the IRS fines, penalties until January or February of two thousand and twenty-five. In two thousand, January of two thousand twenty-five, two new governing board members took office, which changed the power structure of the governing board. Also in January of two thousand twenty-five, Superintendent Emma Wadig was placed on administrative leave and Steve Watson was appointed by the governing board as acting superintendent. In January two thousand twenty-five, in an effort to be transparent, Dr. Etheridge prepared a list of payments that had been previously made by district administration without governing board approval that exceeded the one hundred thousand dollar limit established by the governing board. It was governing board policy that any payments in excess of a hundred thousand had to be specifically approved by the governing board. Dr. Etheridge, in collaboration with the procurement supervisor, prepared this list to ensure that the governing board was aware of the expenditures exceeding the one hundred thousand dollar limit. Dr. Etheridge believed that his employment would have been in jeopardy if he had taken the IRS fines, penalties issued to the governing board prior to January of two thousand and twenty-five. T is the critical paragraph. "Despite directing Dr. Etheridge to pay the IRS fines, penalties in July of two thousand and twenty-four and despite knowing that the governing board approved unknowingly the IRS payment vouchers at its September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four meeting, administrator told Acting Superintendent Steve Watson during a February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five executive team, executive leadership team meeting that she did not know that the payments to the IRS had been made." Dr. Etheridge, and in addition to Acting Superintendent Steve Watson, this was corroborated by Dr. Etheridge and Christine Santos, who attended this meeting and heard administrator make this statement to the Acting Superintendent. What's more, on, on February eighteenth, after having told the Acting Superintendent that she did not know the IRS payment had been made, administrator issued to Dr. Etheridge a notice of intent to impose discipline, which provided in pertinent part, B, executive leadership, sub-one, "Lack of critical thinking when asking the board to approve a purchase made six months before when in open discussion and leadership, in executive leadership, the IRS fees were to be taken to the board for approval, yet the expenditure and voucher cover sheet was already signed." Two, lack of understanding that the notification to the governing board should have taken place well before February two thousand twenty-five. In fact, there were opportunities in September, October, November, and December of two thousand and twenty-four to bring this to the attention of the governing board. And then finally, although administrator did not ultimately impose discipline against Dr. Etheridge, he felt that the notice was retaliatory for him coming forward to make sure the governing board and Acting Superintendent were aware of the IRS fines or penalties or assessments. And those are the alleged facts upon which this statement of charges is based. And so with that, I will answer any questions that the board has.
I have questions.
Sure.
So, sounds like quite a efficient adventure expedition you went on. So I know CFO has been here for several years and I've always known her to have the utmost amount of integrity and ethics. And I also am aware that several months ago, Dr. Etheridge had also self-disposed that he had neglected to oversee his staff, thereby cartwright having to pay two point two, two point five million dollars to the IRS. But you also made reference to two thousand seventeen, and that was a different administration, who had left us in the red. And by, and then moving forward to our CFO, I mean, not only has she been recognized by the state of Arizona, I mean, because she is extremely, she has a brilliant mind and I know her to be one of the most ethical people. I mean, she dreams, she dreams in numbers, we dream sugarplums. I don't know. But Dr. Etheridge had plainly admitted that he was at fault. So I'm not sure why you even are making reference to her being responsible for his actions. Can you elaborate on that?
Absolutely, Board Member Garcia. If you look at the statement of charges, there are no charges being brought for the mistakes that were made that resulted in the fines. And that's not alleged, that that information is provided for context. Because what is apparent is that the governing board was not advised of a very hefty payment to the IRS, two point two million dollars. And, and so it's, to, to, to be very clear about this, it's not the errors. And my investigation uncovered that it was someone in payroll that didn't have an understanding of how these IRS forms needed to be filed. The problem is that when having known that, and again, this is what the evidence shows, these are allegations. But the allegations are that the CFO directed Dr. Etheridge to make the payment. He made the payment. It was presented to the board on September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. And then fast forward to January, when Dr. Etheridge was trying to come forward to be transparent, to make sure that the board understood that two point two million dollars in fines and assessments had been paid to the IRS. At that February eleventh meeting, it's alleged, and there are witnesses who have corroborated it, that the CFO informed the superintendent that she was not aware that the payment had been made. And so, ha, having directed Dr. Etheridge to make the payment, being aware that on September twelfth, the vouchers were presented to the board for approval, it defies reason that she would not know that the payments had been made. And so the focus is not on the mistake, it was on the representations made to the superintendent. And that's why the policies regarding honesty and integrity are charged to have been violated. What's more, once Dr. Etheridge did what he did, he was given a notice of intent to impose discipline for having come forward to try to give this information to the board. And that appears to be retaliatory.
Well, that is alleged. And if my memory serves me correctly, I believe I do recall when Mr. Etheridge had stated that he did submit those vouchers. Now, he could have done that and he can still do it without skipping the process, skipping his superior. And that is something he can do because he is an executive, executive. So I, I just, I really want to see hard evidence to support these allegations.
What, what evidence are you asking about?
Well, you're, what you're doing is you're sharing alleged information. That's alleged.
Well, they are allegations.
Or allegations.
Supported by evidence.
Okay, so that's.
So if you're asking, let me finish, if you're asking for specific evidence as it relates to the factual allegations that are outlined, ask and I'll tell you what.
Okay, well, Mr. Etheridge was responsible for vouchers. He was responsible for the, that the fees would get paid to the IRS. Granted, it all started in two thousand seventeen. Okay, so we know that. And we also know that it was his job to make sure that certain things got taken care of, that the penalties were paid or finances were paid. He also admitted that he oversaw, he was negligent in overseeing his staff. So I don't forget, especially because it, it's the district that has to pay that money. And even though it was a previous administration that had left us in the red, it still doesn't make sense to me that you want to hold our CFO, Ms. Farrar, accountable when every, executives here have staff. They have staff. So if we have staff, then we're going to assume and we are going to, we are going to know that what these matters are taking care of. We shouldn't have to be babysitting or overseeing staff when they know their job. And they can point fingers to whoever they want, their staff, because he didn't oversee the staff or whatever that was, which I do recall you said that. You know, I just, I, I really feel that this is, these allegations that are being made, I believe to be unfounded. I believe that even though she is not here, that she wouldn't be allowed to give her point of view. So no one's asking her. Your, your assumptions and your allegations are based on hearsay. And that's exactly what they are hearsaying.
May I address, let me address the, the points that you made. First, I, I have tried to be very clear about this point. The statement of charges is not based on the errors. And so that's not true that she's being charged with making an error that resulted in the IRS assessments. That's, that's not what the statement of charges says. What the statement of charge says is that on February eleventh, with the stage set about the context of the IRS fines and assessments, she represented to the superintendent that she did not know that those payments had been made. That is the violation of district policy. And when you say that they're, let me finish. When you say that they're unsubstantiated, there is evidence supporting the allegation. It's outlined in the statement of charges. So it's not hearsay. It's not unsubstantiated. And it's also important to point out that the way this process works is she has a right to a hearing and she has a right to marshal her evidence and she has a right to defend against the charges that are made against her. And likewise, the district will put on its evidence and that's how the process works. And a hearing officer will weigh the evidence, weigh the testimony, and make a decision. And so these, and it was, it's important that I point out, I, I, I emphasize at the beginning of my presentation that these are allegations supported by evidence, but evidence has to be measured and weighed by a trier of fact. And that's what a hearing officer would do if she requested hearing, is he would measure and weigh the evidence and make a recommendation to the governing board to make the decision.
From where I sit, it appears to me that I know what you're, you're investigating, I get it. It appears to me that the board and the audience is not aware of specific instances and incidents that have taken place between the CFO and the executive of business services. And what I'm hearing is based on what Mr. Etheridge has conveyed. That's what I'm hearing. So I'm hearing one side of the story and I believe that we need to hear both sides of the story.
And that's what the hearing process is for. But remember that there are more witnesses than just Dr. Etheridge who have indicated during the course of the investigation that that statement was in fact made.
Okay.
And so, you know, there's more than just one person making those allegations.
But when you brought up the money, the money part of it, that Mr. Etheridge, when he paid the penalties to the IRS, he or whoever is implying that she knew about it. But when he gave his presentation, he clearly stated, he self-admitted that he was responsible for it because he did not oversee his staff. And he can point fingers to whoever he wants, but to allow her
Point of order.
To be ruined.
Point of order.
Point of order, I'm on, I have the floor, Lydia.
Of order.
Point of order, Lydia.
Point of order. We're here, there was a presentation, let me clarify something.
I still have the floor, Lydia. I still have the floor. In fact,
I'm sorry.
I keep making reference to the fact that these allegations and assumptions are being made.
Make allegations against another employee.
Highly qualified to be a CFO. She has been vetted, she's highly educated.
Point of order. Point of order. If you cannot maintain order, you will be removed from the, from the diet.
And so therefore, I would ask that the hard evidence be provided in executive session. Will it?
Well, to answer your question, Board Member Garcia, this was, as I indicated at the beginning of my presentation, under the open meeting law, the employee has the right to demand
Right.
that this discussion take place in open session. The district tried to hold this conversation in executive session. So the evidence is alleged in the statement of charges. To respond to one of your points that you just asked, I interviewed the CFO and she told me that she directed Dr. Etheridge to make the payment in July or early August of two thousand and twenty-four.
So during that presentation that he gave, he also made reference that at that time, he did not, she was not informed because that was that, at that point, he was overseeing that project, repaying the IRS. So I, I suppose when I'm being objective, I'm trying to think, okay, well, if she didn't know until after, and she probably had no choice but to inform her. So again, you know, it's he says, she says. But I've known her to never have violated any statutory policies, anything, and has kept this district afloat for years.
All, all I can tell you is it's not consistent with what, what I was told during the interview. She, she acknowledged that she directed Dr. Etheridge to make the payment. He told me during his interview that he made the payment as directed.
Yeah, he made the payment because he had no choice, he was already late.
Point of order.
And had no choice but to take that to the CFO.
I don't want us to, we're not here to argue on behalf of any employee. What I will do.
We're here for the truth.
What I will do. And the truth comes about through a process of engagement, be, being professional, sticking to the points and answering the questions. We heard a presentation that presented us with the argument and it is our job to either inquire, I mean, clarify, but not here to address the performance of any other employee or to talk about what I may think of any other employee or, or anything else that I might, I might have. This is to stick to this argument. And we're not here to defend anybody's actions of what either they shared or not shared. I'm more concerned with what was here.
What you're trying to do is get rid of our CFO, that's what you're trying to do. And I will be extremely transparent. You have gone above and beyond.
I have the floor.
To dismiss.
I have the floor. I gave you gracefully the opportunity to speak. I'm respectful, I'm asking for a basis.
Thank you. Put our deputy superintendent on leave.
Seventeen.
And without justification.
Thank you. We are now resuming the governing board meeting. Please let the record reflect that it is nine twenty-six. Attorney Brown, if you would like to proceed.
Sure. Um, what other questions can I answer for the board? As it relates to the allegations.
Ms. Cantu?
Uh, yes, um, actually, two questions.
Okay.
Um, the amount of money that, uh. Deputy Superintendent or, uh, the CFO can utilize with that board approval is how much, Mr. Brown?
Well, I didn't look at the policy specifically, but, uh, because it, it, it doesn't really. It's not really relevant to the facts that are before us in the sense that. The list was put together in January of two thousand and twenty-five to. Surface or to bring back to the board expenditures that exceeded the limit. My understanding is that it was a hundred thousand, but the point is, is. That, uh, as part of compiling that list. The IRS payments that were made that were two point two million in the aggregate, uh, were added to that list. And that sparked, based on my investigation, a conversation at the district among administrators. Um, that this is something that we need to make sure the board is aware of. And so, uh, it was during January and February that these conversations, uh, of two thousand and twenty-five that these conversations were taking place. And as I indicated, the, uh, allegation that was brought forward, that one of the allegations that were brought forward. That was brought forward that I investigated was that at this February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, the CFO. Affirmatively represented to the superintendent that she was not aware that the payment to the IRS had been made. And, and, and let me finish, and the evidence, uh, is inconsistent with that. Um, I, uh, have, uh, talked to lots of different individuals, and, um. It, it is apparent that the CFO was aware that the payment had been made. Um, and as it relates to the charge that she said, what she allegedly said on February eleventh. There are witnesses who say she said, um, and that would be something for if she chooses to have a hearing. That would be for a hearing officer to determine whether he finds that evidence to be credible. And, um, that, and, uh, su- support, uh, whether it supports the allegations.
Um, one more question, and if it's relevant, that's okay. If not, I, I understand, but under. The executive, um, business officer is under what department, under who at that time?
The, the administrator at issue here, the CFO.
Thank you.
And that is a fact alleged in the sta- the statement of charges. What other questions can I answer for the board?
Any other questions? Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
You made reference to, um, a superintendent being, not, yeah. That a discussion had occurred with the superintendent. Were you, which superintendent were you referring to?
The acting superintendent as stated in the statement of charges.
Okay, that you were speaking with Mr. Watson. He's the acting superintendent.
I ha- I have spoken to Mr. Watson.
Regarding the CFO, correct? Okay. And regarding the, uh, allegations.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, so. Mr. Watson would have limited information. Well, number one, he, this is not his expertise. So what is it that he was able to say that would have? I guess been some type of foundation for you to move forward regarding the CFO, because. He is not an expert here.
Well, the, it, it, his, the information that he provided. Uh, in the investigation was that he was present at the February eleventh meeting. And that the representation made by the CFO to him that she was unaware of. The payments being made to the IRS were inconsistent with the. Evidence that he was, uh, able to look at and, uh, and review. And in addition to that, as I said, there are others that were at the meeting that, uh, have indicated that she said what is alleged in the statement of charges.
And I'm gonna go back and repeat myself because I think it needs to be repeated. So. She stated that she was unaware, and I'm gonna bring back the fact that. Mr. Etheridge had not reported that to her, which would explain why she did not know at the time. And again, again.
It's not consistent with the evidence I uncovered.
Well, it's not consistent at all, because you, what you're basing your information on is hearsay.
That's not true. Uh, let me, let me explain why. I, I interviewed the CFO. And she told me that she directed Dr. Etheridge in July or August of two thousand and twenty-four to pay the IRS. Dr. Etheridge corroborated that and said he was directed by the CFO to pay the IRS. And there's evidence that he pushed through the, the, the payments to pay the IRS. And so it's not hearsay. Hearsay is an out-of-court statement made by a third party. She told me herself. That she directed him to pay it.
Yes, because he had not paid it.
Where there, where there is a, uh, possible dispute on the evidence is the February eleventh meeting. I asked, uh, I, I talked to Dr. Etheridge, I talked to Acting Superintendent Watson. And I talked to Christine Santos, and they said she said she didn't know the payment had been made. And when I asked the CFO, she says, I don't remember saying that. And so th- there is a dispute there, but I have three credible witnesses that have told me it was said. And so that, that is the business of a hearing. If, if the employee wants to request a hearing and have that evidence weighed, then she has every right to do that.
No, I agree with that. I am just, um, basically, I am just sharing what I have heard too. I have heard things also, and I can put things in writing and I can cite different things that I've heard, but it doesn't make it. The truth. It doesn't imply that there's integrity there, although we would always want to know that there was integrity and ethical responses. So with that, I heard what you said. I know that, uh, Ms. Farrar has an opportunity for a hearing as well. But based on what I've heard here tonight and what I've read. And what I, what I know, and based on Mr. Etheridge's presentation, and I was here to hear that as well. That doesn't make sense to me, because he owned it. He said it was his fault. He said he failed to oversee his staff, which was his responsibility. We go back to two thousand seventeen, we know that that administration was responsible for the penalties, and then forward. We still have the penitent penalties that have accrued, and so now the district is out two point two million dollars. And what I see is a fishing expedition where you continue to say that she was responsible. And to a degree, yeah, and to a degree, that's what the board is gonna think, that she was responsible, and why is she on leave? Why isn't Mr. Etheridge on leave? Why is he not being held responsible for? Uh, some of these things that have occurred and not occurred.
Ms., Ms. Gar- Board Member Garcia, with all due respect, I'm gonna say it for the third time. The statement of charges does not allege that, um. The CFO is responsible for the errors that were made. That resulted in the assessments by the IRS. It doesn't allege that. Uh, that, that information sets the context for what is alleged, and what is alleged are two things primarily. First, that she misrepresented something to the acting super- superintendent, which you cannot do. Uh, and that's an allegation, and, and, and she has every right to challenge it. And second, that she then retaliated against Derek Etheridge for coming forward. And saying, I think we need to let the board know about this. And after he did that, on February eighteenth. Of two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-five, she issued to him a notice of intent to impose discipline. For coming forward to the governing board. Uh, and so, so those are the only two allegations. How do I know what?
Yeah, how do you know that her intent was retaliatory? You don't know that, and neither do we.
Oh, I, I, I'm, I'm simply saying that that's how the, Dr. Etheridge indicated that that's how he felt. And I'm saying that the evidence is that he came forward. In January and early February, and on February eighteenth, she wrote him up for coming forward and said, you should have come forward sooner. And so that appears to, that could be viewed as retaliatory, and that, and that is a charge, and she has every right to defend against it.
And that could also be a consequence of a supervisor overseeing her staff. And saying, hey, then that could apply to any of us. If we do something that we should not have done or we failed to do in a timely manner. Could we be, uh, consequence? Absolutely. So does it mean it's retaliatory? Absolutely not.
And, and, uh, everyone has the right to disagree as to that. I, 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 it's my position that there's evidence that supports it. Um, the, uh, board gets to decide, and every board member gets to vote on, uh, how they, uh, want to proceed with the statement of charges. As I indicated at the beginning of my presentation. The board will vote to either adopt or not the statement of charges, and it can choose not to adopt it.
I just feel that, uh, not feel, I just. I just feel that, uh, not feel, I just think that this entire. And I will say it again, fishing expedition is based on they say, you say. And I guess you'll be showing us the evidence, correct?
It, you know, I I wanna say this, I I would not um. Put my name or my firm's name on anything that I did not think was credible. And um I would not engage and and pro- uh move forward with the statement of charges that I did not. Feel was well founded. I I have practiced for twenty-three years and my reputation is worth far more than that.
Well, I will say too that I've been in the helping profession for over twenty-five years, and that I have stated to this board countless times. I will never ever support unethical practices, and I will stand by that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Um, as you know, everything's open to uh interpretation. Um, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your due diligence. Um, I I do want to reiterate. And for those in the audience and those watching as well, that we as board members. Are elected to represent, we're defi- we're responsible um. For the operations of this district. And we have a defined role for that purpose. And that purpose does not involve a board member individually um. Either getting personal, defending, we're here for all administrators, all personnel. Uh, I've made it a point that over the years. And might have been good or bad, but I didn't engage, I didn't. Get to know names, didn't engage any further than that because I wanted to remain objective. Objective in the decisions that we would one day be making, whether it be policy, personnel items, whatever that may be. Uh, and that is part of the transparency and being ethical as well. There are different standards. And.
I I do recall that you taking uh very much offense to a previous administration that we had. And you went above and beyond to let it be known that you disagreed with that process. So yes, you have also defended what you believe to be true, just as I am.
It doesn't even warrant a response. Um, we've been through this over and over and. There's a reason why we have professional development, and I am not an attorney, I am not a judge, and neither are you. And so we employ such interpretation to help us uh adhere to our personnel, our policies. Doesn't make us any different than any any other organization, uh, including a court. So with that, um. I'm going to uh move us on to the executive session. Thank you, um, Attorney Brown, for your presentation, your information. And I move that we, the governing board, go into executive session, which will not be open to the public. Pursuant to the ARS uh thirty-eight, four, thirty-one, oh, oh, three, eight, three. To receive legal advice from the board's attorneys regarding legal issues related to general. Um, in general, to termination proceedings and process under ARS fifteen, five, thirty-nine. Ms. uh, Ms. Cantu, do I have a second?
I second, Madam President.
Thank you. Proceed to a roll call vote. Uh, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Ms. uh Romero.
I'll abstain.
For the record and abstention, and Ms. Garcia.
Abstain.
Two abstentions. And I vote aye. Motion carries, and we go into executive session, and please let the record reflect that it is nine forty-one P M. Thank you. We will be resuming our. October first, twenty twenty-five governing board meeting, and please let the record reflect that it is nine fifty-six P M. So at this time, I'd like to uh motion. Uh, to adopt a statement of charges for termination of employment against Deputy Superintendent Chief Financial Officer Victoria Farrar. And to authorize the acting superintendent to serve notice on Ms. Farrar of the governing board's intention to dismiss. Uh, to dismiss her at the expiration of ten days from the date of service of such notice. Uh, do I have a second, Ms. Cantu?
I second, Madam President.
Thank you, and I will proceed to a roll call vote, and how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, and Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, and uh, Ms. Romero, how do you vote?
I vote nay.
Thank you, and uh. Thank you. And uh Ms. Garcia, how do you vote?
One hundred percent no.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, and I vote aye and motion carries. I'd like to announce that uh the a future meeting date. Uh the next regular governing board meeting will be held on Wednesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. At the Cartwright School District Governing Board Room. Um do I have a motion for adjournment, Ms. Cantu?
I vote that we adjourn this meeting.
You second?
And I second.
Thank you. And how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, Ms. Romero, how do you vote?
I will abstain.
Abstention. And Ms. Garcia, how do you vote? Thank you. Abstention. And I vote aye. Motion carries and we adjourn. Thank you. It is nine fifty-eight. Thank you.